Who do I have in the school to speak tonight?
Scream's been the first number. Hi, my name is Knox Campbell. I think I've been here with some of you before, but I'm back again. I grew up as permanent resident of Signal Mountain until 2000, or really 2009. Forty of those years I was at college, and then I lived with one of my brothers and mom from '06 to '09. I was married, my wife and I bought a house in Chatham, New York. Now reside in Charlotte, North Carolina. Went to work for a company called The Keith Corporation. And we're here to make a presentation on property that we own. Four, currently four parcels. Keith Corporation is a family-owned company out of Charlotte. Two of the members, or two of the family members went to college. There's three of us total that all went to high school here. We have a vested interest here in this community. I don't know that there's anyone with more of a vested interest on the success of the small businesses. Yet admittedly, we own the majority, the lion's share of any one owner of the small business space. We're mainly a build-to-suit developer, which, that means that we do buy value-add redevelopment opportunities. But for the most part, we prefer to develop with a lease-in hand. It's what a build-to-suit means, not speculative. So on to the task at hand here, which we have been in shops at Signal Mountain. We were funding you all initially, and then took some public comments, I believe in August or September. And then we took a step back and said, how can we communicate our vision vividly? How can we incorporate the other properties we own, which was always the plan? But we just hadn't really sat down and said, what's it going to look like? What's the design? And we said, this is a good opportunity to do that. We also, so we'll go through later on here, engaged traffic studies, other various consultants, and really took a step back and put some thought into it. And now we're back with another presentation. This is just an overall site plan incorporating, again, the four parcels. Signal Plaza, Signal Crossing 2, Signal Crossing 1 could go away. And a 38,000-foot grocery store, Food City. Four and a half plus acres we are recommending. We'll go into further detail here on this. But we're proposing to subdivide this parcel, and we're only requesting that 3.66 acres of the 8.25 acres is rezoned highly commercial. That's roughly 45%. On the site plan, just the things that we're doing here, which is a whole property. Obviously, a lot of changes here. The parking lots at Signal Plaza have pathways, landscape islands. We, this is potential here, again, we'll talk about it in more detail. But we would recommend some sort of stoplight or pedestrian crosswalk to increase connectivity. This is fairly light parking, but honestly plenty of parking here. We currently have storage units back here. We're proposing to raise those and overflow parking, staff parking, et cetera. Drop-off zones to improve safety, aligning the two entrances to improve safety. And added sidewalks, first outdoor dining, outdoor retail sales, et cetera. Large buffers on our side, extreme buffer here, as we mentioned. And just an overall increase in walkability, pedestrian connectivity, pathways. You also notice fewer curb cuts. We currently have three. We propose two. And, yeah, that's one comment that we heard and tried to address. There's so many curb cuts, and there's not a lot of traffic per se in contact highway. But there are a lot of cars coming in and out constantly. And we just asked, what can we do to improve that? This will, that will be a ongoing process. This is not the kind of lights, but just some suggestions we may, or others more. But that's probably on that. Next pictures, just what's existing. Think vast majorities are comfortable, or know it's here, drive by often. Or other visual. This is what we're proposing. The landscaping, outdoor sidewalks, seating. Frankly, come up with a little bit that we worked with in the past to really create something unique, to take into account the natural surroundings, the communities, woodlands. And even speak to more, to a better extent, on why we select the materials we did, why the design, women, and us are very happy with the result. Signal Crossing 1, this building will remain. We're proposing a renovation here as well, a facelift. Both of these are aesthetically awesome, and would really like an opportunity to give something fresh to the community. This is a concept of what Bob and his team, the use of us have come up with. Stone, sloping roofs, metal, just materials to really complement the map and the characters we're trying to save here too. This is Signal Crossing 2. We're proposing to raise this building and make way for RBA, a facade for the grocery store. Broken-up facade, this is one of the kind you need, it's not a spring type. This is, this will be the only facility that looks like this. This was made not to look like a larger facility, it's made to look like a series of shops today. This, Bob, you can, Bob, it's been a little time with me.
Yeah. Can you feel like to the site plan, let me experiment on some of the... Yeah, okay. So my hand shakes just a little. Folks, I mean, what this is doing is, again, it's not just reducing curb cuts. This is actually reducing the amount of parking out in front of Signal Plaza. This is a significant reduction in the amount of parking, and putting more parking in the back. So that, and the idea is that employees will park in the back. And right now, they're all parked in the front. So if we get the employees parking in the back, we don't need this much parking in front. It also increases the amount of, right now, what we have is a strip center for library there. On both sides, Signal Plaza and Signal Crossing are strip centers. They're just homogenous, they just, it's just one hand, he fits off. On both sides of the street, Signal Crossing, Signal Crossing, Plaza will become a, excuse me, if I'm like, nervous. Lifehouse Center. And that's the more of the current trend. It's a way to try to make a strip center feel more like a downtown center. It's what's being done. I was just in Nashville today, and there was an entire type of facility like this that I think people would all love if it was here. And the idea is you break down the scale. You no longer have that common denominator covered porch across the front. Every store starts to have its own personality. That's more like a real town. You start having larger cycles. You start having pedestrian streetlights. You start having, you know, pedestrian street trees. You start, there's a significant more landscaping that we're proposing in these parking lots than there currently is. There is none right now, essentially. The pay rate is, right now, when you pull in to go eat at El... My tate? Yeah, I don't know if you're like, how you feel sometimes. It's dangerous, basically. You know, you pull in, and people are walking across, and we're trying to solve that. This curb cut and this traffic light is further down from there. And then there's actually a pedestrian drop-off. And there's actually a larger plaza all the way around. So that if you have other dining venues, you can start having outdoor dining. So that, those are some of the changes that we're really romantic right there. Plus, and then you get to the new grocery store. That's almost five acres that will be forever green. It cannot be developed. You can't put houses there sometimes, even if someone wants to. So that's a huge, for all the neighbors around it, that's a huge green bucket. And permanently. The question is, you know, there were some concerns out, where did the dumpsters go? You know, you can go on the left, and you can go on the right, and you can go in the back. The question is, where does it disturb the least number of neighbors? And we think we got it with that location. We could have put it on with that, but we thought it would disturb the neighbor there.
Where is it?
Right there. So, so this is a significant, now, pedestrian connectivity. There's some nuances on this, and you're not seeing it. Putting crosswalks across town is kind of a really, whether there's a traffic light there, or if it's just a blinking light, that's a major safety issue. And one of the things that Signal Mountain doesn't have is a, in this section, is a good pedestrian access to many of the stores. How many drive there? We all drive there. Because you and the world would walk there. And this is showing all sorts of these sidewalks that people would actually use to access all these shops. So go ahead, you go with the... Okay, and if you'd like, one, one picture. That is a strip center. Next. That is a lifehouse center. There's different materials, there's different type of canopies, there's different type of signage. It's rich, it's using materials that we light on the mountain. It's bathroom materials, it'll be stone, different types of stone, it'll be siding, it'll be different type of canopies, canvass, metal, standing seam. And again, there's a lot of outdoor spaces. There's a subtlety in that that you're not seeing. Right there is the outdoor dining space. Right there is the Elm Tiki, outdoor dining space. Right there is, you know, Southern Star's dining, outdoor dining space. Right now, Southern Star has two tables, I think. It would be cool if they could really spill out into a different place. Keep them. Again, there's Signal Crossing, and just what Signal Crossing could be if it's not a strip, but more of a lifehouse center. So scale, and then you get to the grocery store. Again, we're trying to break it down. All grocery stores have their prototype, and they look at their type. And their prototype is solid, it's the same color brick, and the same color siding, it's the same color. And Food City understands that, and they are more than willing to cooperate and use materials that we on the mountain differ, much more like Signal Mountain. So that's what this is proposing. This is stone, this is siding, these are canvass, standing seam canopies on the right. Different type of lining on the left. So we break down the scale of the big box. And it becomes a much more intimate architecture. It's better designed. I'm sure there's another material scale. The parking, I really wanted to emphasize some of the parking and then the landscape.
Thank you, Bob. What about the town you live up there?
4304 Ave.
Next one, please. This is a survey, just example of what the conservation area would look like. This is the separation, classification, subdivision parcel that we're proposing. Again, four and a half plus acres. Closer of the site plan, again emphasizing some sort of leaking light. We think something is needed up there. And whether the town wants or not, I mean, we don't really have a big preference on the stoplight. But do you think that at least, that the minimal flash of light is either what Hawks did for either of them? That's a short, accurate answer. I don't know either what Hawks paid for. High intensity? High intensity, active crosswalk. Performance traffic study, I provided all of you guys with the top of the other. It's, we take the traffic here, impact would be minimal. I don't think any of us can argue that people are coming up the mountain to go to shops on a regular basis. And we hope that they come up to Cookie Lady, Fred's, and Mountaintop Airways, and Proits, and everywhere else. And some will, when folks are hiking, and we love to create an atmosphere that people drive to. I remember we lived here, at least twice here, we'd go up to Canyon Grill. And that's not a convenient place to get to, it's 30 minutes, but it's a good problem. Just, we're going to run through some views here, some sightlines. This is one right here, looking just towards the northwest there. Slide 2. The vast majority of these, the view's not going to change. That's dense wooded acreage. Towards the back, it's near lanes, possibly. Five, just keep going along. Okay. Down here, this is the area that will have some unit impact. But again, these buffers are both bigger, and they're greater than 50 feet. Like, one's 56, and the last one, the right's 54. Again, it's a level of detail that, you know, we're not getting into at this point in the conversation. But good to know in the future. You can see the loading area is ready. The wall is great, the wood slats. Is that stone?
Stone.
I see a...
And ship line siding.
Now we get into some of the tax implications. This is what we determined, we have no intention of doing this. This is a wasted opportunity. But it's not only the Keith Corporation that thinks that, I mean, the town thinks that, based on every public document I've seen, which we'll touch on later. In order to, but again, I mean, also, like, say residential, highest and best use of residential. We clearly don't think so, and dependent people at county gates agree that it's not highest and best use. But 11 to 15 homes, I mean, to get in there, we would cut most of the trees down. Maybe we wouldn't do it, somebody would. To mass ratings, to make as many lots as possible, much more invasive impact. I mean, there's no argument there. Another thing we'll touch on is, commercial property requires much less in terms of service. They don't, commercial properties don't send children to school. They, most of the time, pay for them, they're trash. Waste pickup. Much less sewer connections, fewer toilets in houses. Here's just an aerial, Food City. Remaining crossing building, updated facade, towards the natural area. I think that doesn't do the natural area justice personally, but a lot of trees. We're just kind of curious, and just beautiful, you know, how many trees is in a medium, moderate wooded forest land? And we think it's up to 1,500 trees per segment. So you talk about landscaping, and the best thing we can do here is keep the natural landscape. I mean, the way this would tuck into that topography, it's almost a natural perm on the right side. You're tucking in the hill, maybe, for the most part, you're steering it back to other trees. You know, obviously, you have a grocery store there now. The building over here remaining blocks it for the first time. So we haven't touched on this in this series. As to my knowledge, this would be the first project with any sort of stormwater up here. Other tax benefits. If this were rezoned commercial, able to put grocery store up here, Food City's estimating net new sales amount of $10.92 million. I don't, I'm not going to tell you what the sales tax is. This is a local split, so the tax amount, $122,850 going off the mountain.
You're saying Food City says they're going to have $10 million, almost $11 million.
They expect $11 million off of the new sales.
Okay, that's not too much. You provided us with some reports.
We'll get to that.
Average of $7 million.
We'll get to that. Go ahead. This is personal property tax. This is estimating other equipment package, they're at that for me, controllers, fixtures. $115,000 locally, 20 subdivision, 27, 375. Go ahead, Bob. Real property tax, pretty simple math, bills rates, value. This is the net value, our investment, less Signal Crossing 1, when we were covering it. Another $38,000, $66,000 in account. By the way, we, all of those values, and we sell them now. So here's the math, here's the hypothetical situation, and we would bring, and we're, yeah. Obviously, we can't predict exact everything, you know, it's going to be susceptible. We're just saying, that's what it does. If you assess higher, I personate to deserve. Go ahead. Oh, sorry. Again, this just goes back to the question, commercial versus residential. There's no argument, commercial require less services from the community. This is a side-by-side comparison, commercial versus residential. This is the net value of Signal Mountain, $37,569, opposed to $1,000, roughly $330. Go ahead. Here's the total, the aggregate, $392,000, personally current $3,600. Hundred times tax impact. Of that, $175,000 gets us there. That's a lot of pond coverage with triple A. Food City's rating community, they get a lot back. This is a family that includes an ESOP, controlled by the Smith family, Baystate Avenue, Virginia. 14 miles into Virginia from the Tennessee border, coming up by, being any Tennessee, huge supporters of the universities. Sure everybody, all of Tennessee, this year, the basketball tournament, UC Food City, right there behind the pages, along with Burke Tennessee, a great supporter of University of Tennessee, this, or University of Tennessee, Chattanooga. They own this, Bob. We own a center that, another grocery competes with them in Southwest Virginia. They did, they, four times the volume of the grocery store we own, just because they're so involved in the community? They did. Go ahead. This is the concept, Charlie, I think you were referring to. So we started asking ourselves, what's going off the mountain? And how do we quantify that? So we approached it two ways. We engage via solution scholars and UTC Business School. Can you just come up with a number? What's leaking off the mountain? What should households up here spend on groceries? And let's look at the tax receipts, let's see if we can figure out what's going off the mountain. Just see if we can explain how impaired it is for the community to keep the dollar club and whatnot. Just let them, let them go to Chatham. I mean, it's, it's either peak or severe sales tax level, or pay more property tax. Eventually, you buy yourself an order and have it fund city government. So we took nine, all US Census Bureau data. If you guys have links in the report, this, they covered grocery in the report. It was, when I read the report, it was harder for me, because it takes total receipts out of context. I said, well, let's just, let's go on there and see what the total leaves. So nine items, I'm going to take up healthcare in a second, and it'll make sense later, but. Personal care, you know, deodorant, rakers, whatnot, home room, it's pet food, dining out, apparel, alcohol and beverages, healthcare, gasoline, food consumed at home, whatnot. Mostly tangible, qualify items, section out, except, look, except for healthcare. 5,890 households in 37377, equates to $23,561, those eight items are plus healthcare per household, go ahead, Bob. You multiply that, those two, just walk through that math, $138 million. Sales receipts, times Signal Mountain, 36. That's 20, it's roughly 29 in retail receipts, and there's sort of 77 food and accommodation. I'm assuming the basketball authority that is eating dining would be my guess. That's all public data on the Census Bureau. You have roughly just those eight headquarters, $12 million going off the mountain. I mean, if you got, received 20% of that, it's what, 2.25% split by two? Real money. Just shows you on a bar chart what they add up to. Healthcare's a bar, just $46 million. Food consumed at home, again, that food consumed at home, it's not included, a lot of things in the grocery store. Alcohol, pet food, personal care, not in pharmacy, not in... Why would it talk about healthcare? This is the only one that said 59%. I assume that's the Lycine Village. Also happens to be part of the base employee, I think healthcare employees in Signal Mountain have 208. I think the retail planet somewhere in the low hundreds, I believe. That's, again, you can find that information, search it through the same census leaks that you all were provided. All right, focusing on the grocery store, food consumed at home. Same math. Spends per household, $6,000. I don't, I mean, pretty hard to argue with that. That's not a lot of money. Over a year. Number of households, 40 million. Again, not including alcohol, not including healthcare, pharmacy, personal care, other. This is, this is an objective study by UTC Business School. They came up with an estimated leakage of $22 to $33 million. The reason there's a range is, you can't find that exactly with the grocery store up here providing the sales. So you have to take a range, and that's, Charlie, you mentioned 7 million. That's the average of Hamlet County. Hamlet County, just Census Bureau of Information, 17 million is averaged nationally. They also took a couple of numbers that they're able to obtain and provide clearly. There's a food line at the fresh market, so they think those were 911. So that's the range, that's where you get, take expenditure, range, leakage, $33 million. We talked about 11 million earlier. That's half, that's a third and a half. All we're saying is, net new sales up here, a third to a half equates that 11 million dollars. Which equates to 122,500 of local tax revenue.
Hold on, hold on. Half of what, a third to a half of what?
Leakage. We're saying of the leakage, 22 to 33 million, we're saying, on the estimate Food City's estimate, is they're going to take half to a third of the UTC student, solution scholar report. The objective report.
They said they're going to have 10 million, so you're saying that's half of it, right?
Right, 10 million, no. So roughly 11 million, which would be roughly half, roughly a third. It's just, when I was talking about the range, the average Hamlet County, somewhere, I guess that's the average. I don't have to worry in that. That's, okay, that's the leakage, be roughly 33 million, average Hamlet County. That's the fresh market, it's a fresh market. Average sort of about 9 million, that's 31 million. That's Chatham, maybe area, food line, I think that's 1111, or then supermarket in US, 17 million. That would be about 22 million. So those ranges are estimating what's being sold up here. That's where the ranges are going.
There are in the food line. I've been there for years.
Well, I think there is, no one, Regal Road, and there's some in North Georgia, which would be the Chatham, the Metro area. I'm not from North Georgia. 23, 33. Well, okay, so take the food line out, it's 11 million dollars. If you don't like that data set, you still have four of the data sets. I mean, it's, I mean, I, the math's pretty clear. And I don't think anybody's real surprised by it. Are you surprised by it?
Well, I bet we could support four grocery stores on the mountain.
Theoretically, yes. If no, but the people are going to go up the mountain. So to have, to have the concept of leakage, you, people either coming to your community to do shopping, or to shop, I mean, there's some areas, like touristy areas, I mean, there's a surplus. There could be a surplus too, if more people are coming. There's Signal Mountain, I don't ever see it being a destination shopping area. I think there's always going to be leakage. My point is, we can, Signal Mountain can do better than that. I mean, that's our argument. I'm not, I'm not saying there shouldn't be four grocery stores. I'm saying, not only do they support you to the drop, that's my point.
I guess I'm wondering, your report from the solution scholar says that the average grocery store sale is 7 million, $87,000. Now, you're saying Food City, which is now serving a much larger community, being off the mountain, Food Mountain, is going to move onto Signal Mountain, and they don't expect anybody to drive up to come to Food City, and that their sales are going to be 10, 11 million dollars, while the average sales is 7. I don't understand that.
So, Charlie, these are professionals that can spot their customers. You have the cards, they know where the customers are coming from. I mean, most grocery stores want to be closer to customers. I mean, Signal Mountain residents, I remember I was growing up, we...
I'm just telling you, I don't understand the math.
Yeah, it's an objective report. I think, I think most people would assume there's some sales leakage. I'm just, I'm giving, in fact, we engage someone, this was something we could, I mean, the census data, we wouldn't compile it without their approval. But this leakage report was an objective study. I don't, I mean, there's not more I can do there. I'm surprised the town had deducted something like this, frankly. I mean, it's important revenue source.
Mr. Graham, were we supposed to be, if I bring in a question? I'm sorry. And actually, this is a good time to bring it up. And Tron Tron came up with the mountain birdage, and Jennifer sold apples, and we did it together. And Beverly Mott's planning commission... And definitely bodies, the planning commission and town council's decision should be based on the request compliance with existing town regulations and not comparing grocery stores or what impact this development might have on our businesses in town.
They're way, way, way.
I, I, I understand, but my, my.
By statute, by statute, we are entitled to determine the uses of the property on the mountain, uses.
Now you don't use, but my, my point is, we don't need, we don't need to get into the debate of how many up here can you support? And that's not what we're here for.
Right.
We're here for a reasonable.
The issue is, what conditions should we place on this proposed development? In exchange for the impact it's going to have in the, as in the language of the statute, on a milliary relative impact on the interest of.
That, that will be.
Next one. Uh, recap, I think we went over the hundred and two million total, on, on eight categories, twenty-two to thirty-three grocery. Uh, this next session, we're just going to talk about the only thing we've been able to go off of, which is the, what's out there on the public record. This is a site plan from the Commercial District Vision Guidelines. This is a, a, an independent study, independent consultants, that's Jim Kennedy, Ann Coulter, Rushing and Wallace, I believe, in two thousand and ten. Uh, as you can see here, this is Signal, Signal Crossing, they're not here, Signal Plaza. It's a box that looks eerily similar, but bigger. There's one, two, three, four, new, I would assume stack of small shop buildings. That's our planned super purpose. Much less invasive, doesn't go back as far into the neighborhood. Many same concepts, trees lined with street, added trees in the parking lots. I mean, is this exact, no, but I mean, this, this has been on the record since two thousand and ten. I mean, it's, it's. Go ahead. It's still a way to use one. This is something that a prudent developer, property owners, and salesmen will look at before buying a property, such as this. This commercial area, talking about Copper Lake, town, focus here. This commercial area should redevelop over time, considering mixed use, certainly a range of retail, office, civic, and possibly residential use. This is, I mean, we have an independent consultant at Town and Gates, it said, the highest of mess use for this property is commercial, we have a way to use plan. And I'm just saying this could be commercial, this should be commercial. I know when we're developing a property in country or Florida, I mean, if D O P says we should do something, that, that's not, that's not an option. We have to do it. They say you increase the stacking for the turn lane, you should. So they have some suggestions, if you were to develop this store. It should be sensitive to slopes, springs. There's, um, they, no access to Copper Lake, should be directed on Cotton Lane, we adequately checked that. Access should be through the existing developments, on Cap Island, check. Again, no access to Copper Lake. Uh, okay, so, again, this is a location, right, no focus here. Go ahead. Few examples, some across the other paths, this is, it's Durham, it's back in warehouses that we developed with Capital Broadcasting Corporation in Jim Fisk, and these were, they can't get back in warehouses, we've been, we thought they were crazy, to be honest, this is before my time, I've heard the story a lot, I feel like it's part of. Now that's thirty-two dollar office rents, Black Sisters flying Duke University, it's one of the downtown boroughs, one of the modern markets in the South East. Go ahead. It's a project that, that I was a, a big part of, uh, Strip Center in Chapelville, was neglected, was tired, against the seven, the standard legal league. But our grocery store, we love it. Uh, recently included this, this, this was a, this was a Walmart, Walmart in New Cross Street, but a grocery store in practice, it's a great adapt to reuse. This redevelopment, I mean, here's nice nighttime elevation here for Signal Plaza. It's outdoor dining, inviting community space. Why we have to build that music stage?
Yes, you do.
Yes, we're building music stage. Uh, actually, a lot of comments would say this. Again, if you have some more of that, I just want to tell you, elevation, go ahead. Grocery. All right, we conduct the poll. Two questions, one. Would you shop in a local regional brand name grocery store that has a strong history of getting back to King? Sixty-eight point four percent supported, twenty-nine percent did not, ten percent had no opinion. Greater two, even with the misinformation, even that, people sent me clips and said, we're asking for public money to do this. We, we have never asked for public money, never applied for any more public money, but that's out there like they were requesting some pilot, uh, Bay Harbor City, Patina Falls. Question two. Would you like to see Signal Plaza redesigned and serve as a town center for shopping, dining, and business experience? Forty-seven point five percent supported, thirty-four point seven percent did not, seventeen percent, seventeen point seven six percent had no opinion. Uh, we must have not asked that question well, because when we received the comments, it's overwhelmingly positive on the redesign. Uh, this is ten percent of the local, the voters in the two thousand sixteen general election. Again, we sent out mailers to forty-nine hundred and thirty people and received feedback, well. There's a couple of comments, next page. Just summarize a few here, I mean, again, overwhelming majority supported the renovations on a extremely positive. Uh, a slight minority, I mean, less than five percent, just outright, I don't want to rezone or other areas. There is a common theme concerned, uh, just some confusion over whether the town supports two grocery stores, which I think I've clearly indicated that the town can. Uh, so hopefully that'll alleviate some, some of the confusion, concern, but, and we put those in there. Go ahead. Just more comments, trying to be, I mean, we put some good in that. Okay. So to be summary, increased tax revenue, conservation area, industrial negative, unique common area of our nation. Designs in line with the town vision, the only public documents we've, we've had access to, the land use plan and the Jim Kennedy handhold of that. Again, limited services required, I'm asking for money, we don't expect a deeply architected structure investment. Meaning rate of tenants, recaps are significant, all sales are not. Uh, to be closing, I'm, I'm going to ask Hallenworth, if he can respond, to, to make the closing comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Knox. I'm Hallenworth from the Chalice Farm here in Chattanooga. Um, let me summarize and try to wrap this up. Ms. Graham, you bring up a good point. If Mr. Noblet was here to be city attorney, he would tell you that your determination this evening must not be arbitrary, capricious, or unreasonable, or have no substantial relation to the public health, safety, or welfare, or plainly contrary to zoning laws. And let me take those in reverse order. Certainly is not contrary to the zoning laws because this intended use, this requested use is consistent with the land use plan, it's been around Signal Mountain since two thousand and eight. The developer has gone to great lengths, as you can see, and spent a lot of time, spent a lot of money listening to the public's comments. And I think the most significant aspect of all this is this, that the developer is going to dedicate over four and a half acres to a buffer. A, because a conservation area, the effect of this going to be a buffer, can't be developed, can't be used, and would significantly, uh, basically distinguish the residential area from the commercial area. Now, um, since I've been involved in the last several weeks, I've heard a variety of comments about this project. I've heard primarily two, and one of which, we don't want to do anything on Signal Mountain that would adversely affect, um, Mr. Pruitt's bottom line. Well, let me suggest to you, and I understand, uh, where they're coming from with that, because no doubt, Mr. Pruitt's been a good corporate citizen for up here for several years. That's not an appropriate consideration under the zoning laws. Also, furthermore, I've heard the comment that we don't want to second supermarket on Signal Mountain. Unless it's a Publix. That is not an appropriate consideration under the zoning laws. Again, the considerations are public health, safety, and welfare. You've heard the traffic studies, you've, uh, heard about the financial and economic incentive, the aspects of, of this project. We believe, again, the developer has been over backwards to accommodate these considerations, to accommodate the citizens of Signal Mountain. They want to be of their corporate citizens, uh, they want to build a facility that not only they would be proud of, that Food City and the other tenants would be proud of, but the Sig, the Signal Mountain residents would be proud of. So again, we respectfully ask that you grant the zoning request for some tax along. Thank you.
Okay. Public comment period. And remembering my words from earlier, we're going to try to lend you the three minutes person. If, if you and some, uh, friends and neighbors sitting near you are alike-minded and want to, uh, and want one of you to speak in the room of twelve, that would be great, we appreciate it.
Do I ask a question about?
Okay, Van, pull the mic up. It just, you guys know, even sitting here, it's a little hard to hear when, when you guys are talking.
Mr. Campbell.
Sorry.
I'm, I'm interested before we hear a lot of discussion from the community, why we have to do this now, given the fact that we're in the process of holding open meetings and charades on refining the land use plan to deal exactly with this through, well, again.
We, we've owned these properties for years. We originally came back in August. That was before we had any knowledge of what we have to do, but, and that's been public record since two thousand and eight, that, that has no, I mean, you all, we're doing the land use plan as a no barrier. I mean, we, the ball's rolling on our side, we're spending money, I mean, we're, we're in the development business. And we believe in this property, we invest in the interest of this property, and we started this process months ago.
So my question's not that, my question's not, are you going to feel some pain if this is delayed, my question is, why do you have to do it now, given that the community is entitled to have input on the matter, and we have scheduled community meetings on the land use plan that will lead to the, a more detailed treatment of this particular property? And since we have the authority and the right to condition a rezoning request, that process undoubtedly will come, will come and show what conditions or definitely should be included on, on any kind of application.
We made a decision to start this process this summer, two thousand and seventeen. We, we've spent a lot of time coming back and.
Same here.
Anybody else?
No, that was just a question, so we didn't, uh, require public input at this time, if you would like to table the applications for later day. So if you would like to hear what they have to say, so we.
Yeah, we, we did table it, from September to now.
I'm understanding, but at that point in time, we were just discussing changes in the land use plan. It hadn't gotten to the point where it was ready to be published and then discussed through the public meeting process.
We still be given ample time, another previous table.
I understand what your position is, so let me hear from you.
So, my name is Ben Sanders, and I am the owner of Threz, which is one of the properties, um, that Knox owns. And the answer to your question is, I know we're trying to, uh, it's our centennial anniversary, the year. And we're trying to make the mountain look nice for a nice celebration. And so that would be a reason why you would go ahead and get this call. So I would just like to, um, say that I am in favor of this, as a business owner. Um, I think that it will help our businesses and, um, and I'm wondering how much of the opinion of all of us affects your decision? Um, affects your recommendation? Uh, and what else, do you have any other knowledge, um, that we may not know that influences your decision? Can you guys, can you answer? Can I ask questions?
Yeah, we have a several public meeting process underway to redevelop the land use plan and update it as a part of our charge, as a commission. And that process is open to public timing.
Okay.
And we, I'm sure there's going to be presentations from other people about the quantum of public input that they received so far. Ms. Williams has got a here emotional on behalf of that we put into the record. Dads, scores of letters that we've received. I can tell you the tone of those if you want, do you know that?
No, I mean, so, I would say that you build great schools. And with that, you attract people to move up here. And by making good schools, you attracted people like me, and I am the chief economic simulator. You know, I spend more money, um, on groceries and I am, you know, my target customer. Um, and I would say, um, that people like me with young kids, um, that were feeding all of their mouths, um, like convenience, and we would rather not. I try to not leave the mountain, actually. Um, and I think that Mr. Pruitt, actually, I don't even, I don't want to talk to him about it because I think it doesn't matter, um, the effects it has on him, but I don't think that it will have a, a bad effect on him. Um, I think it will help all of the businesses up here, and I think, um, the increase driving would help all of us.
So my name's Rodri Davis, and I live in nine oh six Crown Point Road East, Burnham Wood, neighborhood about a mile away from this proposed development. I haven't seen a big clamoring for another grocery store, um, on the mountain. We've got about eleven minute drive down to Food City and Walmart, and maybe it's fourteen minutes over to Publix. We've got Pruitt's right here. So it seems like the main motivation here is tax revenue for the town, and it's an important factor, but I would suggest a warning to you. Beware of the lure of tax revenue. Now, I'm from California, and I kind of left California because I saw it get overdeveloped, both in Southern and Northern California. And in Silicon Valley, um, they used to have thousands of acres of black walnut trees. They're all gone now, and they've got all this wonderful development, and, um, they've got lots of tax revenue. But it's, it's hard to enjoy it these days because there's barely any parks left. It's all Apple Computer, Intel, and so on. I'm not suggesting that Signal Mountain is going to become a Silicon Valley, but I can tell you this, that when the camel's nose gets under the tent and you let him in, and if you don't oppose a clear-cutting type of development like this, then it, it's just, the dam's going to break. After this, there'll be another one, then another one. So I would just be very careful about saying, well, there's tax revenue here. Now, I, I don't know about this leakage, that's, that's a terrible term, because, you know, all you have to do is drive off the mountain, it's a whopping eleven minutes to get to a grocery store. We personally like Pruitt's, but I'm not going to make that argument, that's not my argument at all. It's to keep the town of Signal Mountain as a wooden. It's to keep the town of Signal Mountain as a wooded, beautiful community. We don't need another commercial development with another grocery store. So I'm opposing this, and believe me, there are many in my neighborhood of the same feeling. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lane Ford. I live at 1212 James Boulevard. Our property backs up to this property, so we're going to, would be an adjoining neighbor. I first have just a procedural question. Is there supposed to be a sign posted at the property for public notice for these meetings? Or is that just a courtesy that has happened in the past?
Me neither.
The yellow sign that says public notice is going to be a hearing?
That comes later in the process of legal...
Right. The only legal requirement for signage is when there's going to be the legally required public hearing, which usually takes place when the town council votes.
This is not that.
Okay. Gotcha. So I'm here to oppose the rezoning. I do appreciate Keith Corporation's idea of a conservation easement. I think that's a great positive step, and I appreciate them listening to the neighbors. For me personally, that would, it would help. But ultimately, I still stand here opposing it, really just out of, I guess, several reasons. One, is I'm concerned about the noise. When we eliminate the trees, the dirt, the leaves, the underbrush, then we're going to just create sort of an amplification of noise from delivery trucks, dumpsters, all this sort of thing, it's pretty obvious. I'm also concerned about light pollution, just from the parking lot. The parking lot's, I don't know, maybe six, seven times larger than the existing parking lot. We can see the lights from signal crossing right now from our backyard in the wintertime. And so I know, and our house sits up above, it's just a higher elevation up on James, you can look down on that property. And so it's a little bit, seeing a flat map like that, it's a little bit deceiving in terms of the visibility. And so I think that we'll still have visibility down to the property if it's a large grocery store box. I'm concerned about one of the reports that came from the U T C students that talked about the fact that home values had increased, because I'm concerned my home value is going to go down because of this. The one thing it referenced was that home values, on average, and it didn't state where this happened, went up, maybe, I think it was by $8,000, the house within one mile of the grocery store. But the report didn't consider, what if your house is within 500 feet of the grocery store? What happens to the home value? There are 22 residents that are around the property, and I have gone around and gotten signature from them as to whether or not they were, for those who were against it, or those who were at home when I came by. I'm also concerned about the idea of highway commercial being that intrusive into an area that's low-density residential, and there not being any kind of transitional zoning into that space, that we're going to suddenly, we would suddenly have a highway commercial zone here. So I think that this, I'm concerned about the impact on my home. I'm also concerned about just the dramatic impact on the mountain in general and the commercial district. And I think that that sort of change in the landscape requires a lot of deliberation. I've got a term I came up with, instead of grocery or retail leakage, I would call it quality of life leakage. The quality of life is going to leak off the mountain if we begin to create more of an Oudewah or Hickson-type feel up here. Because I don't think anyone really moved up here for that purpose. At least, I didn't. I moved up here because it was a small-town feel. It's a veteran community. It's wooded. It's a peaceful place to live. So I would just ask you, would you want this in your backyard?
Yes.
My name is Wendy Morgan. I live at 43 James Boulevard. And I have a couple of questions. You owned the shopping centers for how many years?
I think we bought, we bought 16, 2016.
Okay. And the property that's behind it, when did you purchase that, in January 2017?
I think it was right.
Okay. And it came before the town, I think around July, and then it's been tabled since then. And I noticed in your presentation, did you happen to take any pictures during the winter months, like the fall and winter when the leaves drop? I think that's important to include that in the picture that we look at. The other question I have about the signage, you know, in the past, when this came before us the first time, the sign did go up before the public hearing, before the input meeting with Knox Campbell, and a lot of people were made aware of it because of that sign. It also came onto the property at Taff and Albert ahead of this. So I don't know when the procedure changed, but this is a new application, and that has been the procedure. And in fact, Jennifer put before you what the zoning process is currently, and she said after application is filed, then that sign goes on the property. That's the current process. So that was not followed. And I think that we'd have more people at this meeting had that procedure had been followed as it has in the past. I'd like to also talk about that question that engaged the feeling of the mountain about a regional grocery store. I just wondered, and maybe if you had said, how would you support a regional brand and grocery store moving to the mountain? Would that have changed the answer? Just a question. To the members of the Signal Mountain Planning Commission, I'm right to urge you, and I'm asking you to recommend, not recommend, for rezoning 3-plus acres at 617 Coffin Way from low-density, dense, residential to highway commercial. To do so plainly contradicts the goals and principles of our town's recently updated land use plan, does not fit within the small-town character that the land use plan claims to protect, does not meet a need in our community, and absolutely ignores the whole of people in our downtown. Our land use plan, the creation of which is the function and duty of our planning commission, is also the result of input from residents, business people in the community, our planning staff, elected officials, and other community stakeholders. In 2007, an extensive planning process took place to update the 2000 land use and transportation plan. A number of meetings were opened with stakeholders and residents to help them gain a better understanding of open space design and open space preservation. In addition, the public was invited to give input into the development of a land use plan. With over 200 people in attendance and over 270 issues identified, citizens discussed the town of Signal Mountain's strength, assets, needs, opportunities, and weaknesses. Nowhere in those responses do we see the desire for our community to be anything but a small town. There is no stated desire for large big-box stores, no requests for more grocery stores, nothing that could even be construed as a desire for major change in our small town other than desire for stronger control over development. Our strength listed high on the list, small-town feel. Our need, opportunities, also high on the list, maintain small-town atmosphere. You, our planning commission, in your recent update to the 2008 land use plan, also did not see a need for a major overhaul to the land use plan. The updates were minimal, and the overall mission of this document creates for the town was left intact. Then and now, the garbage in our land use plan clearly supports our community's desire to retain the small-town character. The mission of the town of Signal Mountain, according to our land use plan, is to be a community that preserves its small-town atmosphere by managing growth and by acquiring development to be orderly and consistent. Our land use plan also states that planning decisions should preserve, protect, and enhance the small-town quality of life in Signal Mountain while encouraging a high standard development. It should also provide concentrated commercial centers, certainly meeting the needs of residents. Under 3.3 goals for development and growth management, the first goal listed is preserve and enhance the small-town character with a sense of place that consists of distinctive neighborhoods, open spaces, and appropriate scale development. The addition of a 38,000-square-foot grocery store to Signal Mountain's landscape is not in keeping with our overall goals as a town. The big-box store is appropriate in larger towns, suburban areas, but not appropriate for a community whose residents so strongly desire our town to remain small, quaint, and homey-homer by the nuisances that come with this size development. Interestingly enough, our planning commission in 2010 felt the same way when they rejected a similar plan presented by Frank Powell. Additionally, the town hired the architectural firm Kennedy Culture, Rush &amp; Walter in 2010 afterwards to create a plan for development of commercial vision and guidelines. This company met with Signal Mountain residents to develop a vision for commercial growth on Signal Mountain, and in particular, explore the possibility of a town center on Taff Highway. Consistent with citizen input to that land use plan, you will find nowhere in the citizen comments section of the KCRW plan where residents state desire for a big-box grocery store or for a big-box store of any kind. KCRW, along with residents, explored the idea of a town center that incorporated the idea of a central government building with retail stores on the perimeter. The government building at the center of the proposed plan might contain town offices, meeting space, or even the library. The KCRW plan was reviewed and paid for, but beyond that, the town has not pursued implementation of this plan. Again, neither this plan nor did residents call for a big-box chain store at the center of town. Additionally, and as a side note, the architecture of the KCRW plan was not adopted as Signal Mountain's new look. The KCRW plan is a no-way relevant to Keith Corporation's proposal. There is no need for a new grocery store on Signal Mountain. If we need extra shopping options, from the red light at CBS to the red light at Food City, it is 6.6 minutes, 31 seconds, driving the speed limit the entire way. So you can be that person. I belong so much to our community simply here that we do not need more commercial space at this time with the amount of vacant space and retail space on the mountain. We do not want to see our small-town join the throngs of small-town towns across America that have run themselves with bad decisions in town planning. At the time of Keith Corporation's original rezoning request, I began a petition against the rezoning for the sake of the neighbors of this property, whom I know, and for the sake of this town I love. We now have over 1,300 signatures asking that we reject this proposal. If that isn't clearly the will of the people to deny Keith Corporation's rezoning request, and I don't know what is. Please note that Keith Corporation has put another plan on the table that residents and neighbors can support. In their first proposal, and in correspondence with citizens, Keith Corporation has stated and tonight, has stated their second option, Plan B, for 617 Coffin Way, would be residential housing. This, I believe, is a worthwhile consideration, as our town seems to be short on one-story, small cottages that would serve our aging residents, empty nesters who want to downsize but stay on the mountain, or couples who want to move to the mountain to be closer to children and grandchildren. Keith Corporation certainly has the resources and the credentials to create a shopplace for the mountain, someplace that we can be entirely proud of, with a southern-living type neighborhood, a southern-living type neighborhood of small cottages, replete with the value of those mature trees that are already there, that connects our Taff Highway Commercial District with sidewalks and trails, all the things that you're trying to do, not only creating foot traffic for our commercial district, but enhancing our small-town feel. It would not require demolishing one of their shopping centers, and it would tie into their newly refurbished retail space. For all these reasons, I ask that you heat 617 Coffin Way as low-density residential. Thank you.
I promise no one will take that long. I don't know who you guys are calling down the mountain, but...
What's your name?
Jonathan Campbell. I'm my brother's project. I grew up on this mountain. I have two young kids. You know, can't say I'm an outstanding citizen, but...
Are you guys up here?
I do. I do. I actually live in Walden, but our family has several houses that we rent out, such and such. Essentially, I don't think you're going to lose home value when you have a place that you can walk to, that people want to come to. I don't want to spend, you know, an hour every day having to go off the mountain to do something with my family. I want to spend the time with my family. So driving off the mountain for 14 minutes, I don't think that's realistic. I think it's an hour. But if you tell your wife you're leaving, how many come back in 14 minutes when you go off the mountain? Okay? He has a Porsche, but... And I followed him up the mountain scared. But my point is that I don't think, I think, for one, the trees, I mean, you know, my brother, we are all conservationists. I'm a kayaker. I love trees. The trees are going to stay. If you put a residential, they're going to come down. The trees are going to, so that's not a good argument against it. I mean, the trees, going to preserve the trees, and they're going to be there. Two is really not doing that much different, except for making one building a little bit bigger. And in return, the Keith Corporation's going to have a little more income to be able to make the other strip mall nicer that they already own. You know, I mean, it's, to me, Facebook, and a few people get these ideas, and you know, there's a Walmart coming, you know? It's not. It's, people don't have to leave to buy every single thing every time, you know? Now, Pruitt's, I go to Pruitt's all the time, but one-third is alcohol, there's prepared food, you know? It's not every need. Everybody's not going to be able to get everything you need there. So I think we need this. Plus, my wife owns an art gallery right next to Domino's Pizza, of which we, you know, we're just losing money, because people, there's not a destination, you know? People go to Mexican food or McDonald's, you know? And not to mention just being able to drive and walk, ride your bike, the kids aren't going to get run over because there's going to be a sidewalk, there's going to be a place where they can cross the street. You know, rather now, I mean, we had someone smash into Taco Bell in the middle of the night chasing, you know? I mean, if we had something where it's a little safer for kids and people can walk around, eat outside, I mean, to me, that's going to increase your property value if you're near it. Look at North Chattanooga. It was a wasteland. Now it's a million dollars if you're near, being able to walk to a store. So I think that's a bad argument. But that's all I'm going to say to it. Thank you.
Tell you what the vote is.
Claire Rice, Senator 40, Carriage Hill. I oppose the rezon of the 3.5-plus acres at 617 Coffin from low-density to the highway commercial. That property, as everyone knows, is surrounded on three sides by residential. These neighbors will be subjected to the noise and the hot pollution from the day the big-box store opens. The quality of life they lose living in the backyard of 38,000-square-foot store cannot be mitigated with screening, bushes, limited delivery hours, downlighting, and so on. They will all be affected, as will their property values, depending on where they live. A rezon into residential neighborhoods will make it difficult, if not impossible, to deny future rezoning requests into an L D R. This rezon will eliminate 12,000 square feet of small business space, most of which is leased by local residents. This rezon will increase traffic as construction and then delivery trucks, when the grocery is completed, make their way up and down a highway that has an F rating and has already had a portion of it fall off the mountain. There are hundreds who agree that this rezon would be a mistake, one that cannot be undone. The online and paper petition against this rezon has 1,367 signatures. You have to make a decision whether or not to send our town down a path that so many residents are against. The vision the Keith Corporation has for our shopping area and sets we need is just a business decision to them that fits their expansion goals. I moved here because Signal Mountain lacked a big commercial footprint. I hope you will not support this attempt to change the reasons so many of us call Signal Mountain home. There are very few towns that offer what we have. I ask you to please send this rezon on to the town council with a recommendation to deny. Just because you can do this does not mean you should. And I found a comment from Councilman Dick G., and he's still a councilman, and I won't read it. He said, "Ask a realtor the criteria for determining the value of a house, and the answer is always location, location, location." And that statement will certainly apply to the homes that surround this parcel on three sides. Our neighbors whose homes this rezon will affect do not deserve to have the value of their biggest investment lowered because of their location, location, location. their biggest investment lowered because of their location, location, location.
Hi, my name's Joanna Holland. I live at 204 Slaton Street, and my husband and I own Mount Top Toys. First, I want to speak as a business owner, and I may not get to the point of speaking personally, because I may get too emotional. So, we all know how amazing this town is and how lucky we or our ancestors or our super-duper ancestors were to find this gem of a place to live. However, running a business on Signal Mountain poses a unique geographical problem. So, operating a business up here means relying entirely on the mountain population. Very few people come up the mountain to shop at our business. At Christmas, we get some people, but that's about it. Mindy does a better job getting people off the mountain because she has a much more unique service. But the catch is, not everybody shops on the mountain. I routinely run into people who are like, "Oh, I didn't know I was supposed to be on the mountains." Oh, no problem, we've only been here 26 years. You know, not surprised you didn't go. All the time. People will say, "Oh, I never go into the building, I just, I live on Carriage Hill and I just slide off the front." So, the goal of this, and the reason I'm in favor of a rezon, is to bring more shopping, the people who are on the mountain, not asking people who drive up the mountain, but the people who are here and slide off the mountain to go do their grocery shopping and things like that, to keep them here. Keep them here, keep that revenue here, and when they shop here at this store that they are proposing, they will stay. They will shop at other stores. People are complaining about, "Oh, there's all these empty storefronts, we need to fill all of those first." If the business community on Signal Mountain is not conducive enough for these little shops, more and more of them are going to shrivel up and die. And it's because so many people don't mind dragging down the mountain to get their groceries and get this and get that. So more and more of this is gonna go away if we don't change something about what we've been doing for the past however many years. So I don't feel like this is a drastic change to our community. It is a bump out of our existing commercial district. Yes, there are some neighbors who are gonna be more adversely affected being next to the commercial district than they are currently as people who are right next to the commercial district, but this is a really beautiful plan that they have put together. Now, what they came here with in August left a lot to be desired and a lot of questions, and I really feel like the petitions and everything that people have signed over the last X number of months are not based on real information because they haven't seen the real plan. They haven't heard the reasonings behind it. So, yes, there are 1,300 names on a piece of paper somewhere that says, "I don't want anything to happen," but it's not based on full information. So, as a business, as a business whose building is slated to be razed, I still feel like this is in the best interest of our business community for sure, but also for our residents. Bringing people together, bringing them to the middle, putting in sidewalks, revamping things, lots of people talk about, "Oh, I'd love for them to make everything pretty and lovely, but why do we have to have a big box store?" The big box store, the anchor tenant, is what makes this possible. By having this bigger investment and this bigger amount of revenue, the Keith Corporation can afford to revamp everything, which is, brings it all back to us, and it increases our value across the board because we have this better space, this better community space. And I don't feel like it is a dramatic change from what we already have, it's just an enhancement. And I'll leave the rest of my personal opinions. Thank you.
And so Mindy, these might be for you as well. First, we don't get to do it often enough, but thank you for being a business on Signal Mountain. I think, seriously, everyone is for you, so just know that, even though this is a mildly contentious thing we're doing here. What kind of guarantees do you have that you get a space back again and that you could afford it?
Sure, buildings not being razed, I have no guarantees. So, there is the knowledge that there are businesses across the way who have indicated that they're probably not gonna keep doing this forever, and that as those come available, we would be worked in across the street. That's the best that Mount Top Toys personally has been given. So, and this is not something that, you know, next week, we would need to find a new space. Their intention would be to build the building behind us, and then when that is complete, tear down our building. And hopefully by that point, as people retire or things change, if there's space, we would move there. If not, then Mount Top Toys is gonna have to find something else, which would suck because this is the best place to be. There are vacant buildings all over town, but they're not where the people are shopping. And so, Mount Top Toys does want to be in this central business district more than anywhere else. But, I don't have a guarantee. It could totally take me out of business, but I still feel this is what's best for our community and the businesses as a whole. And I have faith that something's gonna, you know, somebody's gonna retire, something's gonna move, there will be space. There is one space in your building that is available, isn't there? It's smaller than Mount Top currently is, but there is a space over there.
If there was some sort of a planned residential development that was back there instead and could perhaps provide more foot traffic to your store, could that help also?
I don't, I mean, I don't think so.
I don't think so. I think people shop, what I have found is that a lot of people are closed on Mondays, which I don't understand, because that's when I, my kids are primary in school, you know, and that's when I go do my errands. Grocery shopping is usually last on your list because you have things that need to be put away.
I'm more concerned with you guys, I'm thinking about the smaller...
Right, I think it will help. And I, you know, we do embroidery, school uniforms, so people come up, our customers, you know, target customers, go to the pumpkin patch when it's finished, have a little day up here, you know, enjoy our town, leave their money, and go. And I think it's a, I think it will help all of the businesses. And I think if we continue to do what we have done, you will continue to see businesses fail up here, and you will continue to see abandoned buildings. Like, we have to try something. Be willing to try something.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop.
Can I say one more?
Yes.
So, as a person with two elementary-age children who sells toys, I am in the unique position of like really directly knowing my consumer. And so, I've got like a kid in the fifth grade and a kid in the fourth grade at Thrasher, and I know the percentage of those two classes who shop our store, and it is not that high of a percentage. So I know how, like, percentage-wise, how many of my peers who would nor, who I know are buying toys because I go to the birthday parties too and I see, you know, that they're buying toys, they're buying them somewhere else because they're going off the mountain. And many of them are still going to do that, and this is where he's talking about the leakage. Lots of our retail is leaking off the mountain, and obviously, it's always going to. Nobody's gonna do all their shopping on Signal Mountain forever, and they're not claiming that they're gonna bring back all of that leakage. They're saying that this would bring back a portion of that leakage.
Okay, thank you.
So, that's what we...
My name's Merit Hudson, 1150 James Boulevard. My husband and I have been residents of Signal Mountain, the town, since 1979. I wanted to, this is a preface to what I want to say, we were not included in the 501 persons who were surveyed by telephone, and I too honestly don't understand why the town, not the planning commission, but the town, did not put the signs up at 617 Coffin Way and at the Guth, right behind Guthrie's, as was done in July, because in July, that was done for the planning commission meeting, and that was how I found out about it. And I know the same thing was done on Taft Road, and I talked with Bill, and he explained that that is all that's required to do. The town puts up those signs, and the town puts a legal notice in the paper, because when Keith Corporation came before in July, I remember residents saying, "Well, why didn't we get a letter?" And it was explained that that's not required. So I'm assuming that it's not required, so I don't understand that why it wasn't done for this, and I trust that tonight, this will just be a discussion, that you all are not going to be making a final recommendation either way, but let me go on with what I wanted to say. I sent a letter from me and my husband to each of you, but you may not have received it yet. Also, I'm not gonna read the letter, but I did take some excerpts from it that I'd like to speak here publicly about. There are many reasons that my husband and I are opposed to this rezoning request. We are opposed to rezoning residentially zoned property to commercial. We do not agree with those who have advised that this parcel of land could be used for further commercial expansion by the Keith Corporation or by future owners to whom Keith may sell this property. We believe that planning for commercial development in the town should focus on the existing parcels of commercially zoned land with an emphasis on upgrading, enhancing, or redeveloping existing properties. We believe that approval of this rezoning request will also set a dangerous precedent for future rezoning requests in residential neighborhoods near the Coffin Way to Albert Road Commercial Center. We are strongly opposed to the construction of any large box store, not how nicely designed in our town. We do not believe a 38,000 square foot store, whether it's a grocery store or any other kind of store, is in keeping with the character of our small town or in keeping with the visions of its residents, and this is reflected in the town's land use plan. In this rezoning request, Keith Corporation is not only requesting to build a grocery store, which is out of scale and size for our commercial center, but also at the expense of demolishing Signal Crossing One and eliminating spaces for popular retail, restaurant, and professional businesses, which are supported by residents on our mountaintop as well as from off. This is directly in conflict with the land use plan, which specifically calls for small-scale commercial establishments in its description of neighborhood centers. We have experienced the effect of commercial rezoning firsthand. My husband and I purchased our home at 1150 James Boulevard in 1988 with the security that the property bordering the back of our lot was zoned low-density residential. Several years later, in spite of the opposition by neighboring property owners, the town council approved the rezoning of that property to commercial for the construction of a big post office. The impact on us and other neighbors who live directly behind the post office has been significant over the years, with the noises associated with the operation of a post office, trucks coming and going in the night or early morning, dropping off or picking up, and the mail carriers sometimes test their truck handles in the mornings. The noise of traffic on Taft Highway is heard daily. The noise pollution noticeably increases with the falling of leaves in our woods and throughout the winter and into spring. Views from our backyard have changed, especially visible through the woods on a fall, winter, or early spring night are parking lot lights, and even the lights at the church across the highway. During the day, the parking lot and highway traffic are visible. Consider that the post office building is only 7,492 square feet in size, built on a 3.46-acre lot, which is 400 feet deep. Our house sits on James on 400-foot-deep lot, with half of our backyard being densely wooded and slugging to the property line. The back half of the post office property remains wooded and slugs upward to our property line, so there is a considerable wooded buffer between us and the post office building. Using the GIS map tools on the Hamilton County GIS map website, we have determined that the distance from the back of our house to the back of the post office is 453 feet, most of it being wooded. Even with this buffer, we have been adversely affected by this commercial rezoning. But the impact we have experienced pales in comparison to what the proposed commercial rezon will have upon our residents. The size of the 3.66-acre tract of land for the grocery store is almost exactly the same size as the post office lot. The grocery store, though, is 38,000 square feet, five times the size of the post office. We applaud Keith Corporation for setting aside a sizable conservation zone, but we know that the quality of life and property value for the four residences that are joining the grocery tract will be irreversibly and unjustly altered regardless of what generous buffer may be offered to them. Using the GIS map tools again and measuring as to profile us to the grocery tract, we have found that numerous residences on Coffin Way and Lancaster Drive, as well as residents on the opposite sides of the streets, are, and that even but the conservation area are far closer than our 453 feet. We cannot imagine the impact that the noises and lights associated with the operation of a proposed grocery will have on this neighborhood, along with the loss of the wooded landscape and with the ever-visible presence of a massive box store. Your responsibility to this town and its residents is great in preserving and protecting the small-town character of our community and of preserving and protecting existing residential neighborhoods. We respectfully request you unanimously vote no to this rezoning request.
To the gentleman who spoke about living in Silicon Valley, I spent three and a half years in San Jose, 17 years in a suburb of Atlanta, so I kinda know what you're talking about. There's been plenty of good points made about this proposed rezon tonight, and I'm gonna try not to be redundant. I want to speak to your role as a planning commissioner. I feel for you. I wouldn't want to be sitting in your seats tonight, I've been in that position before as well. Please vote to deny our recommendation for this request. This land was bought for speculation, or they felt confident that this rezon would go through. Those are the two most likely scenarios. Either way, it was a gamble. You're being asked to now make the Keith Corporation hold, to make that gamble pay off. You're being asked to hand them additional value for this land. You're being asked to go against planning principles which discourage placing this kind of zoning next to LDR, a principle designed to protect residential property owners from harm to their property and their enjoyment of their property. This is about money and profit, nothing else. There is no overwhelming public benefit or public need, as there would be if this happened to be for a desperately needed hospital. If this land was purchased for speculative purposes, it's not your job to ensure that the gamble right. I wouldn't want to be asked to do that again, as I voted to deny a recommendation the last time this came up, and that wasn't all that many years ago. I feel that as a town, we owe residents a degree of peace of mind and assurances that we don't support drastic jumps in zoning at the expense of nearby citizens. It's one of the reasons we pay higher taxes to live here. This won't be the end of it. It does set precedents. So you've been put in this position once again for some of you. I would respectfully ask that you vote to deny and kick this upstairs to the town council. Let the elected officials make this decision without your seal of approval. If they feel strongly that there's an overwhelming benefit to the town and Signal Mountain residents, let them make that case independently. I remember a state planner once telling me that the planning commission acts as a buffer between the legislative body and the citizens in many cases. In this case, I would... In this case, I wouldn't want to be that buffer. I would want them to support their policies on their own. And again, thanks all of you for your service.
Hello, my name is Carson Bach, 609 Albert Road. I would love to stand up here and speak for hours and hours about why this is not a good idea, but I recognize I have three minutes. So I'd really like to recognize some of the points that have been made from the side that's in favor of this and kind of show the light on why those really aren't the true facts and show why this is not a good idea per se and non. First off, in the proposal on the screen, as you can see, they mentioned that they would be making the parking smaller in the Signal Copper, in the Elmatate shopping area. And from my experiences and from the reviews of many others, that's not a good idea. It's hard enough as it is to find parking in that shopping center around dinnertime or around lunchtime, whether there's employees parking in there or not. It's very difficult to find parking. Additionally, with the mention earlier during the presentation that this was a, currently is a strip mall where everything looks the same. Most small towns with a history and a small-town charm similar to that of Signal Mountain have small shopping centers that flow together as one building and that look cohesive and have a history in their town. Now, we all have our own ideas for what we want Signal Mountain to be, but one common theme to me is that these ideas seem to be in favor of preserving our small-town charm, rather than building shopping centers and box stores that ruin our small-town charm and history and buildings that quite frankly look like they belong in Panama City Beach in Florida, which to my recollection is one of the most commercialized beaches in the I would also like to point out that if I heard right, it sounded kind of like to me during the presentation that the large buffer in the back was near one of the developers' homes. I'm sure you all have your own definitions of if that might be a little leaning one or the other, but I don't know. There was something else. Oh, I forgot. They mentioned that we should keep our dollars local. Well, would Food City really be considered a local business or a chain store, rather? If you'd like to keep your dollars local, then I suggest shopping at Pruitt's. Additionally, our community does not need a chain grocery store. We have a grocery store here on Signal Mountain, and well, as somebody else stated, there's a grocery store at the foot of the mountain six minutes away. The vaccine to me, and this is just my noticing as a freshman, this is what I'll be defending, that it's not our mountain that needs the chain grocery store, rather the Keith Company's And there was something else that was mentioned in the presentation. They asked if we were surprised by the numbers of this presentation. And I wasn't really surprised by the numbers of this presentation, but rather by how much of their presentation was about their numbers and how much they stood to gain, rather than how much our community needs them. It's been two, additionally, it's been two years since the poll mentioned in the presentation was conducted. Since then, the community has gotten much more information as far as the specifics of this rezoning, such as the addition of the box store in this rezoning, not just a facelift for the buildings. I encourage the Keith Company to reconduct the survey, see if all of the mountain is still in favor of this. It was mentioned that you all are voting here today simply on the public health and welfare, not if we want it or if it competes with surrounding businesses. Well, looking at the public health and welfare, as far as welfare goes, well, you're backing a box store of 38,000 feet, which is almost triple the size of the store that is currently in place, so it's not just a little bit bigger, up to the residents' homes. Additionally, you could be putting out small businesses that are currently in the area that could stand to lose money and business from the giant box store. And in my closing, I encourage everyone here today to find the Preserve Signal Facebook group as well as the website, and that website has links to the petition against this rezoning as well as the Taft Highway and Albert Road rezoning. And that address is preserve signal dot weebly, W-E-E-B-L-Y dot com. I also encourage the Keith Corporation as well as the members of the planning commission to think about what the community wants and needs, what's good for the public health and welfare, as was stated, rather than what is best for the wallets of those involved. At the very least, this rezoning request should be delayed until we have a modified land use plan that represents our mountain fairly and adequately, rather than choosing which parts of which plan you would like to use. I recommend that this rezoning request be denied for the time grounds. And while I have your ears, I recommend the 14th oh three Taft Highway at Albert Road rezoning be denied as well at the meeting coming up on Monday at 6:30. Thank you all for your time, and I hope I haven't offended anyone too terribly. Thank you.
Tom Williams, whether you agree or disagree with this box's opinions, she's a nun, right? Oh, white, impressive, too.
I am M.C. Yell. I live at 705 Coffin Way. I have lived here since 1968. My children played and enjoyed board games in that park, in that part of the woods that they're back to Terra. I live 277.46 feet from the new proposed store. I confess, I shop at Pruitt's and I drive down from toilet paper and paper towels to Walmart, and I'll probably continue to do that. I drive, I pass the proposed store. I'm just asking you to consider, if this was your backyard, would you want this in your backyard? And I also want to be certain that you know that I shop at both of these stores on Signal Mountain, and I intend, plan to continue to do my major shopping at the shopping center. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
My name is Richard Ford. I believe, uh, 4:30, I'm Rich.
Pull a mic of Richard, please.
Sure.
Thank you.
What percent of Signal Mountain's current tax revenue would the proposed element add? What's the total tax revenue?
You should be really down to the questions. This is not, you can talk about.
Can I speak up a little bit, please?
Sure. Well, I submit that the tax revenue that could be added by this project would be a very small amount of the total revenue of the city currently generates from taxes. And the population, I didn't come prepared for this, but I just looked it up a second ago, is about 8,500, is that correct, Signal Mountain? That would be about, this tax revenue for 390,000 would be about $46 per person. I submit that a small tax increase that would offset this would be, well, more than a box store, that would change the character of. Did I understand that there was a new land use plan coming?
Sure.
New?
Yes, it's, it's many, for the public comment.
Okay. Well, why not postpone this vote till after that, so that this project would be included in that new land use plan? That's a question.
The answer to the question is, we only have, we only have two choices, deny without conditions, approve with conditions, or approve without conditions.
How about approving with a condition that you laid on the land use plan?
No.
Ask Mr. Campbell if he would do that any preferred. He wants to hear what happens.
Right. Well, in my informal hall of a lot of people, probably not the Mount East State Hall, everyone seems to be against a big box store in Signal Mountain and don't see the need for yet another grocery store. So my question, another question, is, is consideration of public health, safety, and welfare offset by what the citizens of the town want? That's a genuine question.
Great, that's a question, or answer. Through this process.
Okay. And I'll reiterate what somebody asked, that will you guys be willing to have this project next to your home? Let that sit down a second, please. Thank you.
My name is Tom Williams. I live at 1176 James Boulevard, and I know you have a tough job, and I really didn't want to be here tonight because I'm a newlywed and I was an attorney for a county planning commission for 18 years. And I promised my new bride I wasn't going to get involved in that stuff, but when I heard about this, I had to come. What really bothers me here is what is the city really going to get from this town-community gathering spot? Because having been on this kind of thing for most of my adult life, you see these wonderful diagrams that show all these trees and everything, you know? And that looks so lush, but really, it's a bunch of pear trees or it's some low bushes on concrete islands in a parking lot that's going to have 150 or so parking spaces just in front of the grocery store. And I agree with that lady that talked about removing the parking over there and putting tables and stuff and all that. You can't park there hardly as it is to get over to Elmatate on a Friday night. You just can't do it. And I'm also wondering where all this pedestrian traffic is going to come from, because I only live a block and a half from this, on James. I would not walk to that grocery store. Number one, you gotta, you gotta carry all your stuff. Now, I've lived in New York City before where we all had the little carts, you know, we pulled. But we only, even then, we only pulled two bags. So also, I want you to consider the lady that stood up here a little while ago that lives just a few hundred feet away from the store. I can't even imagine, I mean, I've handled nuisance cases, you know, from different sorts of manufacturing facilities and office facilities and bars and restaurants, and you're talking about someone that has a buffer, if I remember the report, of about 30 feet or 25 feet from where the, where that wall is supposed to be constructed? I mean, you guys have stayed in hotels before, and in the morning you hear them picking up the garbage? Can you imagine hearing that 365 days a year? Can you imagine an 18-wheeler pulling up under your window, 365 days a year, several times a day? And not just one, they've got a bay for two. And I would submit to you that an 18-wheeler is going to be going in and out of those bays a lot. It's also going to be coming up our mountain, and you're going to be behind it, and you're going to be going slow. And that 18-wheeler, according to the National Transportation Safety Board, has the same impact on a roadway as 10,000 cars every time it drives. And we've got a crumbling road right outside of town that's going to have some serious construction work now and soon, it's going to go down to one lane, and you know those guys and those diesel trucks are going to come up the W road. I'm not trying to really be funny, but I started thinking about, it was just something I thought of last night. So, and also you have to consider not only the noise of the 18-wheelers which is intermittent, I can, you can say that, it's not 24/7, but the air conditioning and the refrigeration and all those compressors are going to be on that building or beside that building, and you're, they're going to hear it. And I guarantee you, it's going to be a whole lot more than 10 decibels or 20 decibels or so. And that's a big deal. That's a real big deal, because that's going to affect the folks that live all up and down that area, because you heard the one lady who says she lives 453 feet from just the post office. These folks live, what, 100 feet? Then maybe 300 feet? I mean, I like what they're trying to do with the conservation easement and everything else, but you know, you guys do subdivisions all the time. You don't have noise ordinances related to your subdivisions because that's just the normal atmosphere of a neighborhood subdivision. But you've got noise ordinances that control commercial uses. And I think you'll see that this, in terms of being a nuisance, is a textbook nuisance. Also, lastly, I want us to think about, you don't leave your common sense out the door when you go sit on that dash right there. And you've got to think about all those, all the, where do they put those grocery stores? They put them on four-lane highways in busy, commercial areas. They don't put them, that plus the residential, on a not very heavily traveled, on average, according to their traffic study, highway. They put it in places that have a lot of congestion, a lot of noise, it's built up commercially. I just think we have a real problem here, and I wish I could figure out a way to solve it, but you've got low-density residential next to the high, next to the lowest possible use in commercial use that you can have in our town. And that's just not going to be good planning. It's just not. There needs to be some kind of buffer or transitional zone before you start putting giant grocery store buildings in the shadow of someone's home. I don't think you'd want it yours. Thank you.
Mr. Williams, where is the loading bay on that side?
Oh, sorry, Mr. Williams.
Oh, it's where I'm understanding that it's specified to the, what, they can show us, would you like to show us?
Yeah.
Isn't it right in the ear?
Right there.
Yeah, right? Right there.
The truck will be parked in the side of the building facing the highway. What does our land use plan say about that?
I'm, I'm not sure.
No, they said, they said no. Said it should be on the back of the sign.
Well, even if it's on the back, it's still going to be on the front. I mean, that, I actually thought when I first looked at it, it's going to be on the.
It doesn't say no?
It doesn't say what?
No. The van just said it said no, that's not what it says.
Have you, have you noticed, you were just at a traffic study as well?
Yes, I did, and I was like, from what it appears to me, there's going to be some kind of traffic.
Did you? Yeah, it's an auto traffic, and it wanted traffic like where they have it listed there. So the truck would turn left in there and then make that sharp left-hand turn into that little comfy area that has a tree on it, but you know, that tree's not there. And to turn left into the parking lot and backs up in front of it, so that's a beep, 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 beep. And then back into the lot, into the slot, and then they have to come out, and to get out, I'm really not sure how the man is that, but it's not going to be very feasible.
Hello, my name is Keith Bowman. I live at 2820 Cohn Road. And I was on the way out speaking, and I ended up hearing some of the conversation. I thought I gave you maybe a little bit more of the neat perspective. Unlike some people, I'm not a lifelong resident of this community. I moved here about five months ago, and I moved here for one reason, one reason alone. This community is very, very lucky in that you have excellent school system. I have four young children, and I moved here for these schools. I can tell you this, I come from another community in Georgia, and you may be familiar with it if you've seen the show The Walking Dead. I live in that community, I lived in that community, and this community embraced The Walking Dead, and we built big structures, we put the nice part of our neighborhood, our city, we actually put a big steel fence around it, and we call it Alexandria, which is actually in Georgia, it's not Virginia. And the town embraced it, the town is bright for embracing business and working with these companies to make things happen for the community, and the town is growing. When I came up here looking for a house, and I went along the highway here, I went, I looked at my kids, and I said, "Look, kids, this looks more like The Walking Dead than our town. There are more rundown buildings not being used than I've seen in many places in the state of Tennessee or Georgia." For this commission, do nothing, do nothing to improve the business situation of Signal Mountain is a crime. It is, it is a crime. You must do, you must act to not act, to keep not acting is wrong. You have a business here that has come to your doorstep saying You have a business here that has come to your doorstep saying they want to make things better. They want to improve the community. I'm a physician. I structured my contract so that I could live in this community for these schools. And I, when I transition away from being a physician, I would like to start my own business too. My hope is to start that business here. But under these conditions, I will not be doing that. Until this community starts embracing the business, until this city starts embracing the business community of Single Mountain, I don't know who in their right mind would. I ask for you to seriously think about this proposal, these gentlemen, and raise forth for you. And I hope you give a serious consideration. Thank you.
You're our last speaker.
Okay, great. I won't tag you off. My name is Spencer Boggs. I live at 407 Georgia Avenue. And I'm like Mr. Poss earlier, I don't know that the numbers add up to me. I have mixed emotions. I'm not going to argue for or against this, but I'm leaning more against it. And it's not necessarily, I've heard a lot of people talk about Pruitt's and calling things by name. It doesn't matter to me. I think when we start talking about market share, leakage really doesn't matter. Yeah, we're leaking a lot of business in this market. But it doesn't mean that a new grocery store is going to capture their business from that leakage. My fear is it'll steal market share from what's already here. And if that's the case, then we do stand the risk of having another family-owned business going out of business and having another vacant, large building here, which eventually could lead to, uh, it could lead to some type of hazard for, for, for people if it doesn't get, get rented out. It could be a public nuisance. Or, you know, the family-owned business there, if they maintain, and let's say Food City doesn't capture the market share, produce the revenue, they, they have large, they have deep pockets. They're a large corporate chain. They're not like a family-owned business. They can pull up and move somewhere else. And then you run the risk of having, I think, a building there as well. So, I think it could lead to some type of public nuisance or some type of health issue or some type of whatever the three criteria was the gentleman alluded to earlier, which actually puts, those are the questions you guys have to consider. So, down the road, it could lead to that. And that's all I have to say.
I would like to request the NOCs get to counter the inaccuracies that were put forth by Carson Bach. And that is all.
That's enough. Need to be able to talk.
Stop.
That's it.
Stop.
We all need to be able to talk.
Sit down.
If he's going to be able to talk a second time.
Sit down, sir.
We all need to be able to talk.
She spoke well for a ninth grader. She put forth inaccurate information. If I can politely answer the question.
No, you never lie.
Okay.
Not even politely.
You're our last speaker.
And A. Good, 506 James Boulevard. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I would like to say that I appreciate, I think many of us do, key cooperation for your interest in our community. We appreciate your willingness to invest here, particularly in rebuilding the existing shopping area. We appreciate the indication that you have given that you would like to listen to the community. And I appreciate your willingness to leave four and a half acres wooded. That's very important to me. I'm on the tree board. Again, we have seventy-three percent tree count of the, as of 2010. I admit this, the desire to leave four and a half acres in mature forest, I think it would wind up not being cut so much because of site work and construction. At any rate, there would be clear cutting, three and two-thirds acres, if we take their figures of three hundred trees an acre, that's eleven hundred trees that would be removed. I find that a lot. I have sent you all an email referring to our land use plan. I would like to just summarize that very briefly here. The land use plan states that government officials will use an adopted plan as a general policy guide when making decisions. In the strengths and assets section of our land use plan, the first three items mentioned as strengths are low density, natural beauty, and a small-town feel. I think all three of those would be destroyed with this. Low-density residential changes to highway commercial. Natural beauty is destroyed. And our unique small-town feel is replaced with big-box scale and sameness. Another asset and strength is maintaining the small-town atmosphere. A thirty-eight thousand square foot store with its associated one hundred sixty-seven space parking lot, its loading docks and its dumpsters deviate substantially from a small-town atmosphere. Also, we would be replacing three and two-thirds acres of mature hardwood forest with stormwater runoff, with that three point two-thirds acres now being impervious surface. The land use plan emphasizes the need to preserve, protect, and enhance the small-town quality of life in Single Mountain while encouraging a high standard of development. Again, a thirty-eight thousand square foot big-box grocery store or any other kind of store of that size is not even keeping with small-town. One of the goals stated in the land use plan is to preserve and enhance the small-town character with a sense of place that considers distinctive neighborhoods, open spaces, and appropriate scale development. That appropriate scale development is, is referenced multiple times in the document. This proposal detracts from our small-town sense of character, from our sense of place, from distinctive neighborhoods, from open spaces, and from appropriate scale development. That means it is detracting from every single goal listed here. Referencing specifically this commercial area, Taff Highway to Hawken Way, at Hawken Way to Town Limits. The land use plan says the development of this focus area should ideally provide transitional space between higher intensity uses and the surrounding residential neighborhoods. This is unfortunately glaringly not transitional space. The four and a half acres that would remain wooded would be helpful. But if I look at the site plan, I see that the store would be fifty-four feet from the lowest residence on Lancaster, which is also in the interest of full disclosure, the home of friends of ours who had three boys who'd lay in those woods all the time. That would not work well for them. An example of the stepped approach that is referenced in the land use plan would be a high-density residential development, providing a transition between a high-traffic commercial node and single-family residences. This is not the case here. I respectfully request that you recommend this reasoned request for denial. Thank you.
All right. Final condition discussion and questions of key cooperation.
Sure. Let's start with the traffic light and the traffic study.
Is this your work product or the?
The traffic study?
Well, just the entire application. You signed off on it.
Correct.
Is it your work product? You oversold the preparation.
It was a team member. Team member.
Then you're familiar enough with the test. Have you had any communications with, with any commission about this?
No, I tried to. You all denied that.
How about with the town council?
I've had interactions. I've run Fox Falls a tenant, interaction with them from time to time.
About this advocate?
No, I've never. Dick and I met early on in the process, more in its capacity as a WWE TA representative or member. So we met, just, I was just trying to figure that out. But it sounds like that's going to be irrelevant.
Speaking of voting, so on the traffic light and the traffic studies, there's a comment that TEE makes. I'd like to find it quick. How you doing? It said, the TEE says it is likely that TDOT, Tennessee Department of Transportation, and for the town of Single Mountain will request that a few of the current access locations be modified from full access movements to restricted movement in the event that signal is approved at this location. It is also possible that site plan modifications could be requested to accommodate better overall access management along the Taff Highway corridor. Have you had discussions with TDOT?
We have not. That, that's, this is preliminary process. I mean, under those circumstances, should we? I mean, that's, that's fiction until we get past these processes. And to my knowledge, how it's going to be, if I'm wrong, but I don't really think that's you all role, the way I understand it. I mean, that's, we can address those items in land use and, and it's a lot.
Well, I'll get to that because certainly the impact on the community is probably a great factor. And the, so the comment here, from where I look at the TEE study indicates that, can you have somebody put up the site plan? It indicates, it indicates that the access, which would be if you're coming, going down some Taff Highway to the north and you go past the gas station, the first turnoff there would be closed. And that's the access to the existing signal plaza center. Because it has the traffic counts on the proposed relocation of that traffic light at that entrance built to zero. So you're going to shut off the current access to a standing business at this location. Like your proposal.
We're going to, we are proposing to move an access point on our property to align with an access point across the street. There is no question in our minds that is safer than what's out there.
Do you own the property that Pruitt sits on as well?
No.
But my, my, my question is, what about the access points down the road? Those are the ones that this study that you.
We're not recommending it impacting anyone.
That's my question.
Sure.
This, those are the ones that this study indicates are going to be closed. So you're going to restrict access to the whole center through your traffic light own?
Of our, of our center, yes.
No, the entire center, whether you own it or not, it's a traffic light, it's sort of a fair access.
What did Dan Lee talk about? I honestly have no idea. I can't follow it. You talking about this side or this side?
He just pointed it out for you.
Okay. Is it traffic?
Yeah. The study shows. The study shows the traffic.
I have to look at that specific point, but we have never recommended and never proposed impacting anyone else's access.
So, so you're willing to abide a condition that you both get the traffic light and maintain current access to current businesses as it is?
We're not even necessarily saying the traffic light. We're just going to work with DOT in the proper time and place, as well as the town, to make that decision. This is just a suggestion. I mean, we're talking about the land use.
So that, that's why, that's why I asked you to table this, because we went through this before, Mr. Franklin was architect for Mr. Powell's proposal. The proposal was, well, we're going to put a publics in and we may do this and we may do that. And we're going to fix, sound and polish the whole area. Once you love it, when we're done. And we said, well, we don't, we're not going to buy, pick, or vote. We, if you rezone this to highway commercial, you guys can flip the thing tomorrow. You don't have to do anything at the site. You can sell it to somebody else and say, hey, look, this is zone highway commercial. You guys do with it whatever you can through highway commercial.
And, and you all at the town council can also come to Straits of Odd to say what can and can't be built. I mean, that's, that's.
That's exactly what happened in that thing, actually.
And that's exactly what happened in 2010. And we said, no, thank you.
But we, we own this, 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 all of that. Why would we flip this? You understand, you understand the, the restriction that we'll have for two years? I mean, it's, these are hypothetical questions.
No, my, my question to you is, we denied this before because it was speculative. And if we rezoned it, then it could be, we're opening ourselves up to chaotic development. Now, I understand your assurances. We got a lot of assurances last time and they didn't fly because they wouldn't say, yes, we have a lease with publics. Do you have a lease with the city?
We do not have a lease. If you're not going to have a lease before zoning, Dan, you knew the answer to that.
No, I don't.
And I think, I would guarantee, if we get this done, we have to, we have to price it. I mean, but it's an approved deal, approved for the city deal, which, I mean, you're never going to be further along in this process where we are than approved deal. And I can assure you, we're not going to go vertical on a building without lease. This isn't going to be leased. I mean, this is, this is not, in fact, we're reducing space. To all the people talking about vacant space, I mean, we're reducing small shop space and we're bringing a business with a signed twenty-year lease.
What conditions would you want to put on that for your proof?
That's what we'll get to. Because the way I read this, we only have, the town has following options. We can, we can deny it and then the town council can approve it without any conditions. Or we can approve it with conditions and then the town council, I think, can only approve it with those conditions. So that was us in the position, excuse me, of, of do we trust our town council if we just deny it to do the right thing? Or should we go through the process now of arriving at appropriate conditions to get your development approved by the town council? Now, I don't know that that's the case. That's the way I read it, Jennifer, is that the way it works?
Town council could put additional conditions on the resetting or.
Modifications on the property.
It would not, it would not have to stick with the conditions that came.
Can they disregard our conditions?
Yes.
They can do whatever they want, no matter what we do. And I think there's other problems with the way our zoning ordinances work, which is another reason why I asked you to table it, because we're going to go through the process of fixing those issues with the rezoning process, not deny apparently, for another agenda.
Hey, that's, from my perspective, I can't see that if you want to join us, Dan. I mean, I don't think tabling this again is a reasonable question. We came here in August, July, we came back in August, we listened to people. We've gone, we've gone to great lengths. We spent a lot of money. We, I mean, we conducted more research and hired more folks. And I, I don't know what the facts were, '09 or whatever, you last saw speculative drawing of, you know, the site plan with no initial information. I, I don't, I wasn't present to see what went on with the decision. But, I mean, from my perspective, we've gone above and beyond what people typically would do in this setting. Is, is that fair?
Speaking only to the process at this point, not delivering your case at all, but speaking only to the process. The, the town has a process for rezoning, which you can apply for. And yes, we are in the middle of a land use plan update and that, that is good information. But you're, you're a property owner and you have every right to apply for rezoning. And in, in my mind, period at the end, you've provided us with, I've heard lots of veteran cases in this county, you've provided us with probably more information than I've ever seen in any case. Most cases don't have things like traffic studies, demographic reports, and I think you guys would be applauded by that. In the short time I've been here, we've, we've looked at, we've looked at, and just two months ago, approved a case that had much less information than what you guys have. And, you know, I haven't read in detail, like, these guys have all of, all of your reports. I've looked at these cases very differently. But I can include your site plan and see where the curb cuts are and road tread cuts are in your neighbor's property. Speaking only of the process at this point, I think we're exactly where we're supposed to be.
I was concerned about the information you gave us. The poll that you did during this meeting, I don't know if you disagree with that, but you asked a question, did you shop at a grocery, at a regional grocery store that had a strong history of giving back to the community? Sir, why didn't you say on Signal Mountain? I mean, that's such a misleading question.
I think we all knew. I think everybody knew he meant on Signal Mountain.
Can you speak up a little bit there on the place?
Can you speak up a little bit there on the place?
I was just wondering why you didn't say, just come out and say, you know, we, we wanted redevelopment for the grocery store at Signal Plaza, which you stopped shopping at a, you know, a main, brand name regional grocery store that has a strong history of giving back to the community at Signal Plaza.
Yeah, I mean, by, Derek, I mean, we, we were very supportive of the poll, we, we were clearly thrilled with the results given this information. I felt, I felt... But I think it's fair representation, 20%.
I disregard it completely, because I think it's...
Well, I mean, but...
Well, I mean, that creates certain problems for me, because I think this is a, a poll designed solely to get favorable results.
Nothing, nothing could be further from the truth, and let me explain why. The reason was that there were some rumor going around that a Walmart was going to be up here. And so, we did not have the opportunity to say this was going to be a food city. What we had the opportunity to say was, you can give a little bit of a descriptor about it, so that people would not think that it was going to be a Walmart coming up here on the mountain. And let me just speak a little bit about how we went about doing the poll. We went to the Hamilton County Election Division, and we got a list of every registered voter within the town that's a single mountain.
I can stop you, I'm not concerned about how you got the people.
Okay, that's fine.
It's the questions that I have.
And that's, and that's why we wanted to word it that specific way, because so many people...
Some people were going to be where it is.
So many people thought that it was going to be a Walmart, or it was going to be a discount grocery.
And I'm not, yeah, I'm not concerned about that part of it, but if you ask me, would I be going to shop at a name brand grocery store that gives back to the community? I would say yes. And I may, because I go to publics, and they are a name brand grocery store, they, you know, they're...
The Walmart is not known for everything that they give back to the community.
So my answer would be yes, but if you said, would you shop there if it's at Signal Plaza, my answer might be no. So that's what I'm concerned with, you didn't say...
I mean, just putting your specifics in there, yeah.
I think, I think it's the reason, because if you ask a question that doesn't say where...
Yeah, I, I appreciate your point being that we stay in with them, well.
Let me respond, because having sat through all this now for a couple of hours, Commissioner Paulson, I think, as you are well aware, you're not supposed to, your job, your bail week is not to conduct a referendum. Your bail week is not to, uh, count the, you know, yays and nays. What you're to do is consider the law, consider the issues that I indicated, that the case is safe that you're supposed to consider, not how many more people stood up and said don't want it, who wants to do one.
Well, that's what you're supposed to do. Our job is to listen to the community, for the best interest of the community, not what's in the best interest of the, necessarily the problem.
Under that specific criteria, not, gosh, I'd rather do a favor to Mr. Prue than...
No, no, I, I, I'm not saying that at all. What I'm saying is, our job is to do what's in the best interest of the community, I think you, that you agree with me.
No, sir, I wouldn't, because again, it's not...
You're asking what the community doesn't want.
That's not the way it's based, if that was the case, we'd have a rep, a public referendum on every zoning ordinance, and then that's the law.
Well, it has to be in the best interest of the community, because it has to fit the character of the town, and it has to benefit the community, and if the town doesn't think it benefits the community, and it, and it doesn't fit within the character, then I think our job is to not approve it.
No, sir, it has to meet the criteria under law, it has to meet the safety considerations.
Let me tell you what the criteria under law is. 1372 of the, says the, the town council, but based on our information, is authorizing and power to rezone properties conditionally, where the agreed conditions are designed to ameliorate injuries created by the rezoning to surrounding property interests or to municipal interests.
Yes, sir.
You agree with that?
I do agree, that's one of the considerations, as well as the safety concerns, traffic concerns, other concerns, yes, sir.
And we heard, and we heard personally affected neighbors who live near this property ask us, now, should we disregard that interest?
You can consider that, but certainly, what are they going to say? Yeah, I think it'll enhance my property, I don't think they'll say that, I don't think that's true. I think what'll happen is, and in fact, when we go further with this, I think we'll bring in competent expert group to show that in fact it will enhance the property value.
That's not my question, my question is, can we condition approval to protect their property interests?
You can certainly consider that, yes, sir.
No, can we condition, the word in the statute is condition, condition rezoning, where the agreed conditions are designed to ameliorate injuries created by the rezoning to surrounding property interests or municipal interests.
So is your question, can you condition approval if it doesn't adversely affect the property owners, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
I've never seen or heard that done, but...
Well, what we would say is, for example, the, the land ordinance has to be strictly adhered to, uh, there has to be no operations at the site after nine o'clock.
If that's the existing law on Signal Mountain, then absolutely, there has to be...
Would it be a condition?
Yes, sir.
I'm talking about conditions, you're going to punch a hole, you're going to punch a four acre hole into a hillside, okay? And I don't care if it's for the Imabel Miles Historical Museum, that's a big footprint. Knox, Knox took us out there, Mr. Langford stood at one corner, this was when it was 3,000 square foot, actually acre holding.
Acres 52,000.
Okay.
Plus...
Forty-three thousand. I'm sorry, you got the money part. The, he stood at one corner, I stood at the opposite corner, and we, and this was in some, but he was, we were invisible to each other, it was so big. It is a huge hole you're punching into that hillside, and you're punching into the town, and we can condition that hole, that it makes absolutely no impact on the surrounding property owners, their quality of life, that's a property interest, that's an interest the statute protects, right?
Let's talk, Mr. Bush, let's talk real world considerations, how would you do that? How would you condition your poll now? That doesn't impact the property.
You can do it, as long as your light doesn't bleed over, as long as your sound doesn't bleed over, as long as you don't take deliveries after dark.
That's implicit anyway, because this developer, every developer on Signal Mountain has to comply with the law about lighting, about traffic, everything, about number of parking spaces, that's implicit in conditional approval.
Those are already conditions.
Right.
But my, my condition was, it has to not impact the quality of life of the surrounding neighborhood.
I just don't know how to articulate that under conditional approval.
It has to, it has to be invisible to the neighbors, they have to suffer no adverse quality of life impact, if you're going to punch a hole like that, they're vacuuming it, none.
Never seen that in a history of making good decisions.
Because we're just on no conditions, you know? And if you want to do this, then we need to have a conditional approval, because we, we did not, we didn't buy a pig in a pothole last time, and you're not going to buy a pig in a pothole with my vote this time.
I listen to the conditions.
Pardon me?
I listen to the conditions.
Which Jennifer has a list of them, and we're going to go through them.
Any more questions?
Mr. Bush, thank you for the information, you, you presented a statement that said you, you obtained a 20-year lease. Is that 20-year lease, is it contingent on what, or what happens to, if there's the diminishing sales, declining sales, not a successful deployment? Is there a condition that they have to stay 20 years?
Um, we have, there's a condition...
Is it articulated clearly, resigned plan, that's not possible?
Well, for one, we don't actually have a signed lease as...
No, I understand that.
Jase would attest, it'd be very rare if this weren't the process, very rare, I mean, if it's rare, we can even disclose it, to be honest with you. I mean, that's, that's just...
I understand, I just...
With that said, a lease is a negotiation, sometimes you can negotiate, maybe operating covenant, they're not going to, for obvious reasons, what I can say is they've got to get paid rent for 20 years. I mean, they, it makes no sense for them to try to operate, or, or to pay rent when they're not operating.
Would, would, and again, would there also, could there be a capital provision, particularly sub let, in what...
They, they could tell, there's no question, they would want that right, that's what all property...
Thank you.
So, the, the market study that you did, a lot helped me have this one, I believe... Are you satisfied with that answer?
Yes.
There'd also be a recapture provision, if they went dark, and we would get the space back, we don't want it, the dark building doesn't help.
No, I understand, I think that's what, just from an open dialogue, I think that's what we're concerned with, from the community's perspective, and what happens if you're looking at a, a 38,000 square foot empty rolling, that...
It hurts everybody.
I mean, but I will, what I will say, if I may, is, I mean, this town has done an amazing job reusing buildings that I've never, that used without their neighbors, I mean, we have two, there's two schools being used up here, I think Mr. Potteek, he told us, fool, that's shocking. I mean, you hear about not having gym space, maybe the town hall needs new space, I mean, I don't know what the use will be in 25, 30, 40 years, and I don't know how long the functional life of the building will be. What I know is, I mean, we want to be a good, meaningful player here, I mean, it should be apparent, I mean, we, we invested, and we want, we, we want our tenants to do that. I mean, truly, I mean, we don't want to see businesses fail or go out of business, we want them to prosper and grow and expand.
The market study you did was based on methodology developed in 1956?
What, the market, marketing study, and the sales report?
Yeah, the model was developed in 1956.
But we, we hired an objective report, I, I don't know what more we can do, I, I would...
Just answer my question, you don't know how to answer my question.
Yeah, I don't know.
Honestly, I don't know, methodology, United States, I'm telling you, I'm telling you, it's based on methodology from 1956.
Okay.
So, in January 2018, you know where the Food Marketing Institute is?
No.
They and Nielsen did a report, that indicated 70% of consumers will be grocery shopping online by 2024, did you take that into consideration?
Absolutely, and you, you know what most of those online shoppers, you know, you wear their Instacart, or Shop, or what, they're going to the grocery store, and they're delivering to most of people's houses, I guarantee you, the people in this room that regularly use their services, and I guarantee you, the people in this room who regularly have groceries delivered up the map.
I'm just saying, the numbers that you had, the drug, the taxes and whatnot, were based on the 1956 model, which was based on the back in the car...
Methodology, methodology was 1956, the numbers, the, the objective numbers that Food City did, which were $10,920,000, those are not done on...
I was trying to say, for once, I wouldn't even lie in 1956, I don't want into that very often, you know? And that was based on a shopping environment, that involved people getting in a car and driving out of the road to their grocery store, and returning to their house with groceries, and in those, that methodology was by using current numbers, come on with the tax revenues and the big dish of all these numbers that you showed us, but it did not take into account the fact that the grocery industry itself recognizes people are going to be shopping online, so they're not going to be walking to these little shops, they're going to be sending their Uber self-driving vehicle.
I mean, that, that's purely speculation, purely...
The tax hardenable...
It was still in 1956.
Uh, but, but saying that they're going to send their self-driving car, I mean, you just had, what, Uber suspended their self-driving car in Arizona, running over somebody, I mean, there's no question, people were in a hurry to get anything.
It's an omnichannel, we can't comment.
You're, you're taking out half the retail that you have there now, right?
I'm, we're taking, we're reducing...
From the left side, you have two buildings now, full retail.
We're, we're reducing 12,000 square feet from a total of roughly 52,000, that's correct.
I guess what I'm saying is, if you're replacing two tents that you have in the building that's full race, four, five?
Four, right.
Replacing four with one, so you're not really increasing the number of, of retail shops, you're reducing...
We, we would find a home for all four of those tents, we have vacant spaces, we...
Not enough building for buildings, that's over there.
That, that's not the intent, but we have vacant space, we've been very thoughtful about who we put in there, we also, there are a lot of businesses, like, we have a few tents across the street that have expressed, they've told me that they're not going to do it forever, they're in their upper 60s, I mean, I'd love for them to sell their businesses, but just the reality is, things happen, pieces roll, and, I mean, we don't know the future, I think, Joe, you said that, I mean, we, I communicated with them through the process, I argued, I mean, admittedly not as well as I could have, but, I mean, I, I think I garnered enough trust that they feel like we're being, we're being taken care of. I, I communicated, I certainly told all of them when they had lease renewals, I said, hey, by the way, this could happen, we've been a good landlord to those tents. Um, I, but, I mean, to be fair, I, I feel like we have deviated so far from the path of which we should be discussing right here, that, I just, I've never been part of this in, in this setting, when we're having discussions of this.
Well, I think the problem that I see is that, that the people, by and large, I think 1,300 people here on San Pison, moved to this community to live in a small bedroom community, and they didn't move to this community, I mean, one guy stood up and he said he moved here and he wanted to see the town row, but I think most of the people that moved here didn't move here to see the town row. They moved here to live in a small bedroom community without big box stores, and this is out of character, I think that's the issue.
Look, we clearly disagree, it sounds like we're on separate ends of the expectation, to the, to the point of the poll, I heard a petition, I have no idea who signed that, I imagine that's our local residents, who knows, let's hit with the facts, I mean, I noticed on one of his petition pages, it said, we're seeking public money, you talk about discounting a legitimate professional poll, and you're under here claiming something that, that, who knows with the facts, I mean, I personally find that very hypocritical, and I don't...
Well, look, I mean, the, the people that stood up here and voted for you, I counted, there's like four, five of them, one's your brother, and two of your tenants, and then one other guy, the doctor, that moved here, those are the first people I had heard who've said we want this. I've gotten lots of emails of opposing, and then a lot of people have shown up opposing, so, I, I mean, it seems to be the overwhelming sentiment is, again, it's, I mean, it's wrong, I don't trust the poll numbers, because I think it would be misleading, but it seems to be the overwhelming sentiment is, we don't want this kind of development in our small community, and that goes with what the land use plan says.
But we begin to recircle to somehow some implication of a popularity contest, I mean, we're just talking about the, we're a landowner, this is best for the community, and we are seeking for you all to make a decision under your mandate, and the mandate is...
It's not, I'm not, it's just what the community wants, if you would, the place where they live.
Well, as we took, if we took, again, heard this several times now, the only, we tried to meet with you guys, I mean, you were the one who said, we met as a, we discussed this as a committee, which I think, to my eye, that's the thing they're supposed to do, I said, yeah, we decided not to do that, so how am I supposed to get through on that?
Right, I know, I know. If that happened.
Well, Charlie sent an email saying that we, we all discussed it, and, and we're not going to defend it, that's, I can tell you...
It wasn't a discussion, we went on the advice of our...
What was that?
Land planners, that it was probably not a good idea to...
They were not required to take a meeting.
Not, not required?
Yeah. Not... It would get back to the actual rezoning, and away from who's going to move where, and that sort of thing, please. We do have a recommendation from our planning staff that lists some conditions, so I think we should run along those conditions, and then add two, this is 75,000. You get that out of hand for 39,000, Chris, again?
Why don't we, why don't, why don't we just have both of the, two, nine application in this state, Jerry?
You had just said a little amount of things, that you want conditions?
No, well, that's what I said, that's what I said. But I said was the infirmity in our ordinance, which indicates to me that, that the town council, if we deny it, the town council can do whatever they want, if we approve it as is, the town council represents it, if we approve it with conditions, the town council has to abide the conditions.
That's...
That's regulation.
No, that's, no, no.
Let's hear from our planner, maybe.
The town council does not have to abide, abide the conditions, they can be altered as established under state law.
It says, no such amendment, which is, this is one of the problems with it, it means also rezoning, shall become effective unless it be first submitted to and approved by the planning division, or if disapproved, receiving favorable vote of a majority of the entire members of the town council 30 days after such initiative. I read that to me, if we approve it with conditions, the cap of the town council has to take what we say.
No, no.
What do you mean, no? It says it like there. Well, I can tell you, I can tell you, Terry, you're just in the files right now, you need time. Our attorney has been on record a number of times with contradictory advice to that, that we, we make a bad recommendation of the town council, and the town council can accept it, change it, or however, and he's our lawyer. For rezoning, what's? For rezoning, yes.
Madam Chair?
If we could.
If we could, if we could, let's go over the staff's recommendation.
Let's do that condition specifically.
So if you wanted to solve a crime, to make the motion to either accept those conditions or add to them, then we'll note what aid or crime. And I'm assuming that most of the citizens out there have vision probably as bad as mine, and I'm worse, so Jennifer, if you don't mind reading that.
Before we did this, you decided to accept or add to, we also, you have the ability to...
Exactly, but if we were to accept, basically, the conditions...
May I ask a question before we do that? If we are inclined to not approve it, the conditions don't matter.
Yeah, but we all, I want them all to hear the basis of the conditions that our planner has recommended.
Right.
And then, so if someone does say, "I'd like to approve it with those conditions," we have them there, the addition of...
So we're gonna, we're gonna hear these without a motion?
Just gonna hear these real quick.
Without a motion prior to...
Without a motion.
Okay.
So the law...
Or even...
So the, Ben referenced this a lot earlier, the laws for conditions to be placed on rezonings, and the basis for that is to ameliorate potential damages to surrounding property owners, and also to protect the interests of the town as they relate to that rezoning request. So I have listed a few here that I feel meet those qualifications, but I've also included the fact that, based on further discretion, there may be more than could be deemed necessary. So the first condition relates to access. This one is a little bit tricky, because all access to the property is going to be, is going to have to get approval from TDOT, that's not something that the town or the developer can fully control. But I think at a minimum, that should be limited to allow no additional access points, I don't think TDOT would ever approve anyway. And as a planner, I do feel that aligning the access points at Brockton Drive is an increase, increases safety and should be made a condition in TDOT. Any questions about that?
In making your recommendation, you're aware of, it's likely that other access points nearby would be shut down?
If they're not on the property owned by the applicant, they would be impacted.
Then why is their traffic engine present? It's a, TDOT controls curb cuts. If you put a traffic light, well, the way I read it was, if you put a traffic light here, and then you have turn light, you have curb cuts too near that traffic light, those cuts are shut down. And also, I read that by looking at the study, it went to a traffic pattern, and as proposed, shows those access points that are existing there, traffic turns falling to zero, indicating to me, you can't use anymore.
The only entity that would be able to do that would be TDOT, and I can't recall any scenario where TDOT shuts down an existing access point. They deny applications for driveway permits, but I have never seen them shut down an access point before.
Your own study says it has, that's all I'm saying.
Andrew, are you sure you're not confusing that access point with the one that's existing that we're proposing to move? I mean, I just, I don't have it in front of me, it's been a while since I've heard it, but...
I'm not sure, but...
Okay, I think that might be the case, but...
Well, what indicated that to me most strongly was the fact that the proposed traffic pattern after the installation of this overhead powered traffic signal showed that those other access points had no traffic on it.
He's not... Shows access through it, that's, he wrote.
And what we think goes to that, hey, interesting.
Lawrence is 377...
Yeah, Lawrence, probably can't claim to have updated studies, so speaking of water matters.
I don't have it with me right now, but I know that we have updated our study that we got recently to make sure, in combination with talking, because I spoke to TDOT, and they've said, you know, we'll have to review the site plan in full for actual land development process, and, you know, as a, we've worked with several other municipalities, and it's never our intent to impact any of their neighboring properties in terms of shutting the driveways down. So it would be fully resolved within our own confines of our site and up to TDOT's discretion. And they have updated the study, and I can get you the updated study level, but that was done probably prior to the most recent site plan, that it may have slightly been tweaked.
Just as the advice from the planner and your own attorney maintained, we should not consider choosing one grocery store or the other, similarly, we should grant you a monopoly to access to this area.
Not at all. Not requesting that, we're not...
If you shut down that road into the existing entryway, doing the existing businesses there, that's exactly what you're doing. This body does not have any jurisdictions over where curb cuts go, or, I mean, this is only case in the site plan, all this information has been provided, every, all the other stuff, we can, we can put these, we can put these conditions on here that Jennifer's provided, which I think fixes what you're asking, but this is not jurisdictional body that decides where a curb cut, you know, on a state highway. No, I'm not saying that. I'm saying that point number one right there should be a condition to develop this property, that four, one shovel is turned over there. They've had a plan for this access from TDOT that we like. And one of those conditions is that it does not negatively impact existing property owners in the area.
Sure. I'm looking at the page of the traffic study that you're referencing, and the figures shown there are anticipated trips to the grocery store site from that point. So it's saying that there is zero anticipated trips from the previous site to the grocery store site, not that there is zero anticipated turns.
The grocery store is like crawling across the street.
Correct, that's what it is, that's what that figure that you're looking at is estimating, and it took, I mean, it took me a second to get to that.
There are four or five different figures of various scenarios in the, in the study, so...
I'd just say, okay, Dave, as likely that TDOT and or the council announce a request of the current access location to modify the full access movement or restrict the movement in the event that a signal is approved at this location. I don't really know what that means.
So the condition would be, as stated with the proviso, that if TDOT requests any access changes that impact the current traffic flow in and out of existing businesses, they have to come back into approval. Can we wait to discuss these conditions until we have a motion? Is that fair?
That's fair. Sure.
So I have a question, if we're gonna do that. I have a question for us to discuss, just about what we're doing. I want to read three short paragraphs from the land use plan as it stands now, that apply exactly to what we're talking about. And the existing land use plan talks about the ex-ent commercial zone, which is between Albert Road and Coffin Way. And the ex-ent situation is, it's residential behind, so this is, this is about zoning specifically, not about whether or not you want to, whatever you want to do there. "Some expansion of this existing center may be appropriate to provide the town and its residents the wider range of services present in a small town, however, any expansion should be carefully considered." That's the first paragraph. Ends with "should be carefully considered," which is what we're doing now. Second paragraph, "Development of this area should be sensitive to the sloping topography of any streams nearby, and all developments should be accessed off of Taft Highway," that's all met. "Additionally, any development or redevelopment of this focus area should provide a buffer between the development and any nearby residences." And so that's partially what's at question right now. "The size and type of buffer can be determined as a condition of rezoning or as a part of the site plan." In the last paragraph. "Most appropriately developed as a whole, rather than on a parcel-by-parcel basis, development of this focus area should ideally provide transitional space between higher intensity uses and the surrounding residential neighborhoods. An example of this stepped approach would be a high-density residential development or office space providing a transition between a highly-traffic commercial node and single-family residences." So the way I see this as a planning commission member is, this is residential already, it's zone residential right now, we have a commercial strip that exists right now. Anything that would change during our consideration would be what is changed in that stepped situation. And the stepped situation, as I see it, lends itself more to high-density residential, as is, as we, as is mentioned in the land use plan. So clearly, we're supposed to follow the land use plan, I think everyone could easily agree with that. So, speaking specifically about this case of rezoning, is it conflicting with what we just approved as a land use plan? And that's, that's the approved version.
We're in on a motion. Do you bring the graphic I asked you to?
Yes. This graphic would show the existing surrounding zoning with the lighter yellow being low-density residential. You can see some median-density residential sort of to either side of the proposed area for rezoning, with existing highway commercial district in front, some office district, and then Plan Congress Center districts across the street that may soon be highway commercial district. And I've also included comparisons to the future land use plan.
To what?
On the left is the future land use plan.
Future meaning that's what's going...
That's what the land use plan is recommending. And that dark blue is classified as neighborhood center. And I have the definition, and I may read it as well.
And here, where I am is, my opinion has not changed after hearing all this today, and I'll say this, I've, yeah, for planning commissioner, in a small town, you don't have friends and neighbors on both sides. I mean, this is my neighbor right down the street, and I know most of this crowd for a long time. So, you know, to me, I think these cases are very, very simple. And if they don't have anything to do with grocery stores, and have very little to do with traffic and all that kind of stuff, that I was kind of interested to look at. I would say the private property rights guy, as you can imagine, and I appreciate, yeah, I think your plan, some parts of it look absolutely fantastic, and I'm pro-business and love to see business grow, you know? Where, where I separate from that is exactly what Dan described, and I had a transitional period of zoning between our most intensive and our least intensive. And I think if you try to do that with your buffer, I voted just two months ago against expanding our commercial zone, and I feel very strongly about not expanding our commercial zones on Signal Mountain. So having said that, I would make a motion to deny.
And a motion, we're second, any further discussion?
Go on.
If there's not further discussion, on favor or denied proposal?
Bye.
We're not done. And I'll need the approval, if you have ten.